I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tuesday, Thursday, September 6, 2018, 7:00 PM, Room 4, Riverside Township Hall.
I would note for the record that President Sells is not able to be here. At this point, it would be appropriate for Kathy Haley to call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Lumston.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Well, I would note that because the village code doesn't provide for a specific president pro temp to chair the meeting in the absence of the president, the appropriate thing at this time would be for there to be a motion, and I think the suggestion is that there be a motion to appoint Trustee Ballerine as president pro temp to chair the meeting.
Second.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Does Trustee Ballerine vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ballerine?
He's voted against his own question.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine is officially ensconced and can preside.
Could we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have a presentation from Point B Communications Marketing Campaign.
Yes, I have Hamish here from Point B Communications. They are our consultant for our marketing and branding that we've been going through over the past couple of years, so he's here to go through the marketing campaign and provide you with some results of that and talk about some possible next steps. The first thing he wanted to, for us to do was show the video that they created for us for the marketing campaign, so I'm gonna turn it on loud in here. This doesn't last everybody out of the room. I apologize if it's a little loud at first, but let's try and see. Let's see. Get this going. I'm close. My aim is somewhat true.
Discover one of the hidden gems of Cook County, Illinois. Discover the village of Riverside, a picturesque oasis just minutes from Chicago. Find yourself in the beauty of enchanting forest preserves and sweeping green spaces designed by visionary landscape architect Frederick Law Olmsted. Nestled amongst the trees are architectural treasures by Frank Lloyd Wright and Joseph Lyman Silsbee. Join the party with one of our year-round festivals, from farmers' markets to art fairs. Explore Riverside's unique artisanal and boutique shops that are locally owned and sourced. After a fun day of shopping, enjoy one of the town's culinary delights. Whether it's a casual lunch or an elegant dinner, you'll find it in downtown Riverside. So get off the grid and discover the charm, beauty, and shops of Riverside. Visit riversidoffthegrid.com.
So hello, my name is Hamish McDonald. I'm with Point B Communications. We've been working with the village of Riverside for over a year. A little bit of background for you. We did start with a very in-depth discovery session and branding exercise with the village board, where we came up with, through our discovery sessions with a lot of key stakeholders involved, this get-off-the-grid brand idea for the village. With that brand idea came a very particular aesthetic, and it was certainly very well-received from the folks who have seen it so far. What you're going to see today are the results of, sorry, the performance results of a campaign that we've been running through social media. The reason that we chose social media in particular to begin this campaign, some of it was budgetary reasons, it's a very cost-effective way to get our get-off-the-grid message out to a large audience. We did create that video you've just seen for you and then ran that on several social platforms, very positive results, which I'm about to share with you. So, as I alluded to, we did create this rather lovely video for you, which ran as an ad in a paid social media campaign predominantly on Facebook, but also on Instagram as well. When visitors to the ad, oh, sorry, when they clicked on the ad, it took you to the landing page that you see on the right there, which does correspond with the get-off-the-grid brand that we've created for the village. The landing page did have the video embedded in it. It does have the village of Riverside aesthetic attached to it, and it also had some very poignant key points that led people to the existing village of Riverside websites, so event calendars, what else is it, event calendars?
Event calendars, our business directory, and the started business or official space.
So we were able to see on your existing website where folks were visiting, and we used the landing page to point people in those directions as well. So people see the video ad, people click on the ad, take you to the get-off-the-grid website, give more information about, very pertinent information about Riverside. Why did we choose video? So the reason we wanted to make it a video ad video is much more powerful and emotive tool than strictly static display advertising, especially on social media. People interact with video a lot more. We were lucky enough to inherit some of the footage that had already been taken, and we were able to edit that together to create that lovely piece that you just saw. So what happened with our paid Facebook? This campaign ran, you see the dates there, through the 60th of March through the end of May, and again, the reason for the short timeframe, we wanted to get this, we wanted to, we wanted to make this hit a measurable audience. We had a very specific budget that we had to work within, and again, we felt that within these budget parameters, social media was the best way to go. The target audience was a 10-mile radius within the age group. You see there 24 to 54 with a household income of over $75,000. So that's a, that, those are Facebook parameters for a very targeted audience that are seeing this message. So we hit over a million impressions. We spent just over $4,000 during that timeframe. We got 4,052 clicks on our ad for a click-through rate of .38 percent. It is in the Facebook click-through rate world, that is very good, just by the way. We do have benchmark numbers that we can share, but .38 percent is a very good click-through rate for Facebook. Cost per click at $1.06 is also an exceptional result, especially for video. Facebook has the advantage of video advertising costing the same amount as static banner advertising, so that's what makes Facebook a very cost-effective vehicle to generate awareness, which was the main goal of this campaign. So total views, 69,060. Total completed views, 3,742. Got to admit, we were astonished with that number. You just saw the video, you saw how long it was. It's almost coming up a 90-second video, which for social media videos is a little long. We had a lot we wanted to say, but we knew it was pretty long. Completed videos, 3,742. People watched that in video in its entirety, so not just watched the first few snippets of it, but watched it all the way through, which is an exceptional result. So the cost per completed view comes in at about $1.15. So that was for paid Facebook. Partially through our campaign, after discussions with the village, the Riverside Arts Weekend was coming up, and we decided to apportion part of the budget in our Facebook campaign to try and drive traffic to the Riverside Arts Weekend specifically. So what we did is we ran concurrently our Facebook video that you just saw with an ad you can see there to the left that was more specific to the Riverside Arts Weekend, and then clicking on that ad led people directly to the Riverside Arts Weekend website that you see on the right. That campaign only ran from the 1st of May through the 20th of May. Obviously, it was a very, so it ran a couple of weeks before the event. Once the event was happening, obviously, that turned off. 1,114 impressions for that ad, $605 spend, 214 clicks, again, pretty good, with a click-through rate of .19. Benchmark for this type of thing is generally around a .06 click-through rate, so .19 still a very positive result for us. Cost per click at $2.83, and a cost per thousand of $5.31. I'm hoping this is making a little bit of sense to some people. You can get tied up in the numbers a little bit. Long story short, from a social perspective, the video performed exceptionally well. This ad driving people to the Riverside Arts Weekend performed well. So just to summarize for the overall, so from when it started in March through to when it ended in May, click-throughs ranged from about .36 to .39, again, very good. Cost per click ranged from about $1 to $1.25, also very good. Ad recall consistently improved each month, so as the video showed more, results got better and better. The arts weekend thing wasn't a video. It was a static ad, perhaps performed a little, a little less well than the video, but still performed well. Ad recall rate was a little bit lower than the video at 2.82 percent, but that's to be expected, video versus static. So what happens when we run an ad? The clicks on this were leading to the riversidoffthegrid.com website that we have. Again, that website, it incorporates the brand aesthetic that we developed with the board here. We sent, so that shouldn't read, that should be the whole thing, 836 users to the website for 917 sessions, so a few of those users went back again and had a poke around. Don't be too concerned with the bounce rate there, it's a single-page site, so as soon as you leave it, that's going to count as a bounce. So don't worry too much about that number. One thing we are absolutely delighted with, again, this is a single-page site, you scroll up, you scroll down, that time on site of 2 minutes and 16 seconds means that targeted traffic was being driven there. They were really having a look around, poking around, having a look, clicking through to the riverside.com site as well. So very, very positive result with the time on site there. I put these charts in because they look pretty. Busiest time on site was Saturdays at 7:00 PM, and mobile traffic was getting a lot more play than either desktop or tablet. This is the type of information that people generally like to get when they're looking at Google Analytics, making sure that their websites are performing and people are being driven to it through your advertising. So an even larger part, so that was paid social that was leading to our get-off-the-grid website. A larger component of the campaign that we ran was organic social. So we developed a social media strategy. We developed all of the posts for this social strategy on both Facebook and Instagram. We drafted a calendar of posts with each topic laid out for the three months that we were developing these social posts for you. That was run by the board and approved before anything happened. The results of this, from an organic perspective, have been excellent. Total impressions on Facebook, 52,000 impressions. Total reach, 33,000 people interacted with our social media posts. What's interesting about those two numbers, so 33,000 people reached but 52,000 impressions, we had a lot of people go back and look again, which is great. Total engagement, 4,241 engaged people with our Facebook posts means that people were either liking or commenting on our posts over 4,000 times. That's great awareness for the village. Total mentions, 32. That's people that are not us going on and mentioning Riverside posts. Again, sorry, is that 22 or 32? So pretty happy with that number as well. We did do some boosted posts specifically for the Riverside Arts Weekend and the LaBarra post as well, so we actually paid a small amount of money to boost those posts a little to good results. We also ran an Instagram campaign, 2,803 folks engaging with our Instagram and gaining 309 followers to that, receiving 2,700 likes. So again, this social campaign, first and foremost, was all about awareness, trying to get people knowledgeable about Riverside, people interacting with our brand. It's not yet getting the get-off-the-grid brand out there fully, given the budget parameters we had. We felt like this was the best awareness play we could make, and in all honesty, pretty delighted with the results we've received from an awareness perspective. It's what we can measure. So we do have some thoughts around what we could potentially look at doing this upcoming year. I do have a couple of different budget scenarios to talk through. There is some, actually, pop back just a bit, there's some, yeah, there are a couple of things that we would like to create for you that will use the new get-off-the-grid brand aesthetic, because it's very lovely. It's, you're all aware of the new logo that we developed, and this get-off-the-grid aesthetic really marries in with the form of that, with the colors of that, and the get-off-the-grid, call it a tagline for lack of a better term, really speaks to Riverside and its long-term sustainable competitive advantages. Those advantages we came up with, and again, working with the board through our discovery sessions, they form the pillars of all the communication pieces that we want to create for you moving forward. A few things that we would like to apply this brand to, there's some brochures, a new video edit, a suite of web banners, which will be very important for any programmatic digital display marketing we want to do for you, and then we have some thoughts around Metro as well, with your Metro line running right through here. So again, there were, there are a couple of budget scenarios that we worked through that are a possibility for this upcoming year. One is a $50,000 spend. We have pretty much year-long programmatic digital display. Point B does an awful lot of digital advertising. Programmatic digital display is working exceptionally well for us. It allows for very, very targeted advertising to go out to where anybody is searching for stuff on the web. So not site-specific, it's audience-specific. So we determine who the audience is, and they'll get served advertising wherever they are on the internet. So we're highly recommended, recommending, sorry, programmatic digital campaign. Facebook performed so well for us, we want to continue doing Facebook. It's an exceptionally cost-effective vehicle, and certainly benefits from video as well. Am I rambling, going too long? Metro train cars. Believe it or not, we actually do a lot of these for other clients as well, given the fact that you have the Metro line going right through here and a very, very captive audience on the way to the city. We think that that could be a powerful platform to show our message as well. And then quite excitingly, a short summer flight of Comcast local spot cable. Again, we have a lot of video assets from you already in the can, meaning that we don't have to come back out with a camera and shoot stuff. We have a bunch of stuff that we can edit together to make a powerful TV commercial for you and run it on Comcast cable. If that's a little rich, we have a $25,000 spend option as well. The Comcast cable goes away, and the programmatic digital is scaled back, as is the Metro train cars. So, you know, we're always looking for an integrated campaign using some traditional, some digital. Most of what we do these days is digital, but it's, you know, whatever is going to be the right vehicle, we will always consider. So there are two options on the table with different budget parameters at the moment. We've created this rather beautiful brand for you. We need to get people to now see it. That's pretty much it. Any questions for me? Silence? Okay.
Thank you very much. So I know we've had some budget discussions, certainly as we move into more of our budget discussions, we can talk about it more, but I just wanted to give you that recap of where we're at with the 2018 budget as far as the marketing campaign is concerned, and let you know kind of what our consultants' ideas were for moving forward for future marketing campaigns. So, thank you very much.
So does ABC get a copy of these options?
Yes, they did get a copy of that.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. I would like to ask if there's somebody, if there's something here that you want to speak to that's on the agenda, and you would rather speak at that time, please feel free. If there's something else that you'd like to speak to, now is the time.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all in person. I usually see you at home, and it's nice to see Bob Hughes from the front instead of the back. He is my boss, so I must say nice things. My name is Joanne Cozy. I'm a lifelong resident of Riverside. I live at 601 Selborn Road, and I'm here tonight as president of the Riverside Township Lions Club, and as you may or may not know, we are having our Person of the Year Dinner on September 27th at the Riverside Golf Club. This year, we were very pleased to announce that Frank Gangware is our, excuse me, Person of the Year, and Frank is very worthy of the honor, and as a, to show you how much he's worthy of it, when I called him and told him that he was going to be selected, and he said, "But I'm not worthy of it," excuse me, and to that I said, "And that's exactly why you are worthy." Excuse me, he has a lifelong service to the community of Riverside. He's been on the down-low on a lot of things, but much of what he has done has left an impact on Riverside, and I'm very pleased to have that person. And last year, you may remember, that Joe Ballerine was our Person of the Year, and look where he is now.
Sometimes I say sorry.
And he also was, was very, very worthy of it, and he's, he enjoyed it so much, and he said he wanted to speak again, so he will be introducing Frank this year, and I understand you're working on your speech?
I am.
Okay, I've been told you're only allowed so many minutes, and if I go like this, you're done.
Fair enough.
Okay, so the tickets are available now at Aunt Diana's, at Riverside Bank, and Riverside Public Library. They are $45, and it's worth it, cash bar, so bring your shekels, it's at the club. It's on the 27th, and we hope that you can all attend. If anybody has any questions, I would be glad to answer them. If you've never attended one of these dinners, it really is, it really is a very nice event, and it's a chance for us to honor one of our, one of our own. So thank you very much, and hope to see many of you there, and I'll be in the hall hawking them. You don't get a discount because you're buying them now. Also, I'd like to tell you that they will not be available that night at the door. So if you want to come, you'll be standing at the bottom, and I'll be yelling, "No, you can't come in, and I'll throw you a roll." Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. I have been very fortunate enough to know Frank most of my life here, and he truly is a worthy recipient, so thank you. On to report of village offices. We have the village president's report. Since I've been the president for the last 30 minutes, I do have a report, and it has to do with our CMAP 2025 initiative. You know, our goal was to, or one of the goals was that we're going to increase our population in the village, and I'm happy to say that we went from 8795 to 8796 with the birth of Thomas Simon Jiza. So I'd like to congratulate Wendell and Vail, and all I can hope is that we don't reach that population go just through Jesus. Village manager's report.
I should not have a report this evening.
Approval of the consent agenda. I will read the following items. Approval of the voucher list of bill, September 6, 2018. Approved the village board of trustees' regular meeting minutes, August 16, 2018. File and review landscape advisory committee minutes, July 10, 2018. File and review park and recreation board meeting minutes, May 21, 2018. File and review planning and zoning commission meeting minutes, July 25, 2018. File and review preservation commission meeting minutes, June 14 and July 25, 2018. That's it. Do I have a motion and a second? So moved. Second. Kathy?
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Next is a report of the department's commissioners and trustee liaison. Chief Weitzel.
Good evening, President Ballerine, trustees, manager Francis. This report is just to update you on the six-month crime stat. So we are required by statute to report to the Illinois State Police our crime every month. They break it down six months in a year. They typically are two months behind certifying it, so I submitted it on time, which was June 1. They just certified those numbers within the last three weeks, so I'm releasing them that our overall crime mid-year is down 7.4 percent from the same period in 2017. That really only represents four reportable crimes. It went from 54 to 50. Reportable crimes are mostly felonies and some violent crime, listed in misdemeanors such as domestic violence or domestic battery. A lot of crimes that we would normally see, traffic offenses, drug offenses, are not mandated reportable crime. We report it to the state police, they report it to the FBI, but it's not something they use to track in what's called the Uniform Crime Report. It's just used to gather data. So our crime is down 7.4 percent. I can't guarantee that that'll be what happens at the end of the year, but I always like, whenever the crime is down, no matter what it is, it's a good thing, and these numbers will be appearing on the state police website for every community, probably in another couple of weeks. And then the year report will, I will submit on time, but the state police probably will not publicize that until close to May, because they have to take the whole state, and then they have to prepare a report to the FBI. So I just wanted the board to know that, where we stand as of June 1.
Thank you, chief. Ordinance as resolutions. I know that quite a few people here are here to speak, are here for basically the vacation rentals, bed and breakfast, so I'd like to, with the consent of the board, take it out of order and take it as the next line item, if anyone, if you don't mind. Yes, ma'am.
Do you think you can add that?
Yes, ma'am, you will.
No, I mean, taking that out of line.
Oh.
Maybe staying at work, because it seems like the crashes and driveways would be shorter. A lot more.
It's my wife's, so. I have no problem. It's up to the board. You guys want to stay, we'll stay in order. I have no problem. It's up to the board. You guys want to stay, we'll stay in order. Sonia, can you give us a brief understanding of A, please?
Certainly. We've been discussing some code changes to the zoning ordinance as it relates to attached garages and their associated driveways. This stemmed out of some conversations that were had and some concerns raised by the state preservation office and the National Park Service about some of the teardowns, the number of teardowns that were occurring in town, and what was being built in their stead. And Preservation Commission took this up and discussed this and brought to you the village board some of their concerns. Their primary concern was the construction that was being built and those teardown situations. And talking about that most of what was being built was new, single-family homes with attached front-loaded garages that were being built exactly to the zoning standards. And that they were individually, not necessarily an issue, but in the aggregate, if this is the trend of development, they saw it as being a potentially negative impact on the character of the neighborhood and an impact on the general plan of the village of Riverside, which is the Preservation Commission and our landmark designation prioritizes that. That was where their concern laid. So they brought that recommendation to you, saying that they thought that perhaps the zoning ordinance needed to be looked at to see how we could better protect our landmark designation as development continues. So the village board asked the planning and zoning commission to weigh into this and look at it, and that's what they've been doing in 2018 primarily. So we've had many discussions over the past several months regarding attached garages and their associated driveways, and how we can minimize their impact on the landmark designation, the character of the neighborhood, and also what we can do to try to incentivize people who are looking to build, to choose either a rear-loaded or a detached garage in lieu of doing an attached front-loaded garage. So as we moved through that discussion, that was, some of the main ideas were that if you are going to do an attached garage onto your home, that the preference would be that that garage would have to be set back from the main facade of the building to try to de-emphasize it as opposed to it being the primary thing that you see in the front of the home. So that was one of their recommendations, was that detached, or attached garages needed to be set back. One of the other recommendations was try to incentivize, again, how can we incentivize somebody to do something different than just that attached front-loaded garage? So in some discussions, the idea was, what kind of building coverage bonus could we give? So the planning and zoning commission recommended giving a building coverage bonus up to 400 square feet to new construction or what morphed into anybody, basically. If you choose to do a detached garage, that you could get a building coverage bonus of up to 400 square feet. Or if you chose to do a rear-loaded garage, you could get that, that bonus. That would afford you a little bit more room for your home, the footprint of your home, or an addition that you're doing onto your home without impacting impervious surface, because obvious impervious surface is, is an issue in town and drainage. So the impervious surface restrictions of 45% or 55, or 50%, depending on where your, which zoning district you are in the village, would still remain, but that 30% building coverage would not include up to 400 square feet if you choose to do a detached garage versus an attached front-loaded garage. So to try to provide that incentive. The other thing that was discussed was driveways. And so some of the, another concern with the attached front-loaded garage is that you have a driveway that is, you know, 16, 18, 20 feet wide, kind of depending on the size of the garage. And that's a fair bit of concrete in the, in the front of the home. And so one of the concerns was, is that part of the general plan, part of Olmsted's vision, part of the beauty, the character of Riverside, is our open spaces, is our green space, is our parkways. And as we have these wider driveways, we're losing more and more of that green space in the front. So their recommendation was that we try to limit the width of the driveway. So part of their recommendation was that you only get that wider part for a certain number of feet, and then that driveway has to taper down to the maximum 10-foot requirement. So for detached garages, the code currently restricts your driveways to 10 feet in width at a maximum in the front yard, goes past your house. And then when it approaches your detached garage, it's obviously allowed to widen up to get into your garage. So the idea was the same for the attached front-loaded garages, that you can have it 10 feet wide, and then as it got to a certain point, it was allowed, 15-foot point, it was allowed to widen up to the width of the garage so that you could get into each of the bays of, of your garage. And that was a way to try to minimize the amount of pavement that's then in the front yard and minimize the amount of pavement that's in the parkway as well. So it's, it's that narrower idea. So the text amendment that you have before you incorporates all of that changes, has been reviewed by the planning and zoning commission, it's been reviewed by the Preservation Commission. They discussed some of the concerns that the village board had prior to going to the public hearing about whether this should apply to existing structures or not. So as part of that discussion that was had, some of those changes were made from it just being a bonus for new construction to affording that bonus to existing structures. So if your house doesn't have a garage at all, attached or detached, and you choose to do a detached garage, you would be afforded that building coverage bonus so that you could perhaps have that addition, provide that additional space for the home and have that detached garage. Additionally, they would afford, they chose to afford that bonus to, say, if you have an existing home that maybe has just a one-car attached garage, and you want to be able to have a two-car, a two-car garage. In many instances in town, we just don't have the width and the way the houses are situated on there. There's not width to expand your one-car garage. But if you were to abandon that one-car garage and put a two-car garage in the back, then, you know, you would be afforded that building coverage bonus for making that decision to get rid of the attached front-loaded garage and go into something that's in the rear. So to try to encourage people to reuse homes as opposed to tear them down, to encourage people to invest in their home, you know, continue to invest in their homes and try to preserve more of our housing stock. That was some of the expansion of that building coverage bonus that was initially talked about that happened as that public hearing process happened. So you have the planning and zoning commission's findings a fact, you have the Preservation Commission's review of it before you, you have an ordinance before you that incorporates those changes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think first, do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this?
So.
Ma'am?
Point and board, yeah. Can we, can we bring the motion first?
No, not necessarily. You know, it's, it's acceptable for the board to discuss a matter, to reach a consensus, to determine if a motion's appropriate. In a much larger assembly, you need a motion and a second to discuss or you'd have chaos. But I don't think we'll have chaos, so it's okay.
So, so who should I address? Oh, I'm sorry. Jennifer Barrett. I'm at 128 Fairbank, here in beautiful Riverside. So who should I address these questions to?
To the board.
To the board. Okay. So if you have an existing front-loaded garage, I read the ordinance, and it seemed to me, is it, if, so say, for example, my front-loaded garage caught on fire and I had to rebuild it, would I be allowed to rebuild it as it exists now?
Sonia?
Can we, can we get all the questions and then have staff answer them all at once?
Sure.
Staff will make notes, and we'll answer the questions.
Okay. So if, in fact, I couldn't rebuild my existing garage the way it is, if it caught on fire, for somebody like me who sits on a pie-shaped lot, there, it would be impossible for me to rebuild my garage behind my house unless I tore my house down. So, and we don't have a concrete jungle issue on our block because we are all on pie-shaped lots. So if you drive down the 100 block of Fairbank, it's beautiful, and we have lots of green space out in front. So even though there are several, I think four out of 11 houses have front-loading garages, you don't feel like there's a lot of concrete on that street because our parkways and front yards are very large, whereas the backs of our houses are very small and narrow. So, you know, imagine this is the front and the back is like this. So for most of us to get a car behind our house, we would have to, like, tear it down the back of our house to make that happen. So that was my concern.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Alfie Wald. I live at 134 Fairbank Road. And I have concerns with the proposed change in the zoning ordinances for front-loaded garages. As it's written now, as it's going, if it gets passed, everybody that has a front-loaded garage, if you did any changes to your house, you would have to bring it back, like, five feet, or if you had it five feet in front, like, 10 feet. So you would have to tear down a major portion of your house just to do any renovations. So it would put most of the houses that are front-loaded non-conforming. So that would be a huge impact on the value of your house. If you're trying to sell it, people would be like, "Well, your house is non-conforming. Let's knock $50,000 off of it," which is not really fair to the people that have front-loaded garages. And would create hardship. It says in here that the planning and zoning commission and village board shall consider following standards for text amendments, the relative gain to public as compared to the hardship imposed on the applicant. And I think the people that have front-loaded garages, that would be a major hardship. We're blessed to have the village that we have. We have beautiful homes. They're so diverse. And I think making it like a cookie cutter where everybody's houses have to be in the back, it takes away a lot of that beautiful diversity that we have. If you had a fire, your insurance would pay for replacing your existing garage. What if you have to take your existing garage out, put it in the back, redo the whole plan of your house because of that? It's not, that would be hardship as well. I don't think a lot of people know how this would impact so many houses in Riverside. I don't know how many houses are front-loaded, maybe 40%. So is it going to affect all of those houses? I just feel like it's unduly affecting people that have front-loaded houses. If you want to go forward, and if it's really going to affect our lands, our, if the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency and National Park Service is going to change our landmark designation, then we definitely have to look at that. But I don't think you should penalize the houses that are existing with front-loaded houses because we got our designation, there were front-loaded houses with garages in the front. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, before we discuss, do we need a motion and a second, or if we could just? Okay.
Not necessarily. On a, on a large issue, you may want to determine where there's a consensus, because otherwise you'd have a motion and a second. You might end up somewhere totally different. So, okay.
I got a bunch of questions.
Can I ask, can staff answer those questions first?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. So if the fire were to occur and you have an attached garage that doesn't meet the current code, in rebuilding, you would need to either meet the code or go through the variance process in order to rebuild it so that it doesn't meet the code as it is written. That's how our non-conforming ordinance reads. And that is if it's built, if it's burned down beyond the 50%. So there's kind of like this 50% threshold. If your house is damaged more than 50%, then it's considered destroyed. And then in rebuilding it, you do have to meet the code. So if you couldn't meet the code, then you would have to go through the variance process to ask for that relief to not meet the code. In some instances, if you say you didn't meet the sideyard setback, it would be a similar, you know, a similar instance where you would have to go through that variance process in order to be able to rebuild in the exact same footprint that the house had been before. If it's not damaged by 50% or more, then you, you can work with your existing things. Similarly, with renovations, we would not require you, as part of a renovation, just because you wanted to do an addition onto your home or do an interior remodel, it would not make you bring your garage into conformance in order to be able to do that remodel. It would be existing non-conforming, and you're allowed to remodel and maintain your home, but you don't have to bring that garage into conformance because you want to redo your kitchen or because you want to do an addition onto the back of, the back of your home.
But, but that property would be legal non-conforming. And so if somebody went to sell the home, the village would send a letter upon that sale saying that this property is legal but non-conforming, correct?
Yes, we do a certificate of compliance for all sales, so we note any non-conformities on the property that we can find as part of reviewing the, the platto survey.
So by doing that, we would take 40% of the properties in Riverside and make them go from compliant to.
Can I talk?
Yeah, I'm, I'm answering the question.
She's answering it.
I'm asking it.
I want to clarify a question. And then go to the board. We need some process here. So the answer to the question is, it depends on whether it's 50% damaged or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And it also depends on your insurance company, because we checked with State Farm and USAA, and they will only apply money for what you have to rebuild. Again, I, I think we should make a motion and start so we know the point, because, can I make a motion, Doug? Are we okay with that?
We're done.
Okay. So I make a motion that we reject this ordinance amendment in its entirety for a multitude of reasons, some of which I shared with, with others already. The biggest issue right now is, is that there's quite a few people that are frustrated.
In order to discuss after a motion, there has to be a second. So if we're going to do it this way, we have to do it that way.
I'll make a motion to reject this in its entirety so that we can go back and get it right and do something that's going to help us preserve the village without harming 40% of our residents.
I'll second that.
All right, perfect. Thanks. So just humor me a little bit, because I've spent quite a bit of time going through this. And, and again, I, I think that we all have the same passion in order to preserve the character of Riverside. I think that the unintended consequences of some of the things that we do up here are starting to bite us in the tail a little bit. The one we're going to talk about here in a little bit is an unforeseen consequence, because we didn't have a chance to vet through the whole process. So in going through this and unpeeling the onion on looking into this, there are several big concerns that I think a pretty large and growing number of people that have front-end loaded garages or homes, that the language with, included within this will become and move from compliant to non-compliant. And where that becomes a huge problem to all of us as homeowners is in the fact that the village will send out a letter saying that this is a non-compliant home for the following reasons. The garage is no longer five feet proud or behind that. So therefore, if your garage is perfectly in line where it was built originally, just as it was approved when we got landmark designation in 1970, it is now a non-compliant home. And so then a savvy developer purchaser like myself is going to go to that homeowner and go, "Hey, I got this letter from your village and you're now non-compliant. I want $50,000 off that value of that property." And that seller has no opportunity because he's already got the earnest money. He either has to give up the deal or compromise because it's something that we've done in a pen and ink stroke here, and we haven't thought thoroughly through it. That's the biggest reason why I think we need to stop. There's no hurry to this. The, the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency nor the Park Service has came to this village and said, "If you don't change this by November 1st, we're going to pull your landmark status." There's no reason to push this through. In addition to that, the way that this was advertised, again, there's a difference between the way we advertise things and the way we communicate. We've had multiple people come up to the podium on most, more of the most contentious situations more recently and identify they're frustrated with us and our staff for not being transparent. And this is another one where I think we're doing things legally. You guys are giving us great advice to do it legally, and we're doing it very efficiently, but we're doing it, the notifications are in the least legal manner. Did I say that right? Lance, the way?
There's a minimum legal requirement?
Minimum legal requirement. And I think that that's what the residents are getting frustrated with. The Levy Project, we had people come up here and talk and say they felt like they weren't properly informed. The vacation rental property, we had people come up here and say they feel like they weren't informed. We have people with this one right now feeling that we changed the agenda after the notice for the hearing. The notice for the hearing is a very simple, vague, and vague intentionally, is the way I understand it from our legal eagle over there, which I greatly appreciate his advice. And it's intentionally legal to, or vague so that we have room to migrate. The challenge is, is when the hearing happened, everybody was talking about this in regards to new construction and new developments, and the P&amp;Z even reached out to developers to participate in the meeting. But at that point, none of us in the village that have homes that were impacted were ever properly notified. We were legally notified in the newspaper, but I don't think we were properly notified because nobody had a chance to attend the meeting. So that's why I think this needs to go back to P&amp;Z. So that's why I think this needs to go back to P&amp;Z. We need to start over and do it right. There's no sense of urgency, and there's a lot of harm that could be done if we don't do it right. And Doug, I think you did a brilliant job of trying to get to a working point, and I think this is a great starting point to go to P&amp;Z with. Because this really works to try and say, "Okay, from all the homes, from, put a date in, date in the sand, going forward, we're going to have more restrictive requirements that help us preserve the village character. But we're not going to impose harm on the folks that have already bought a home and may have dreams and desires to renovate their homes." I think that's a very fair and reasonable approach going forward, and I know our P&amp;Z preservation folks, in conjunction with us and our staff, can do that. This currently doesn't get close. So if we take the existing conditions out, the reason why I don't think we can proceed forward with your language, Doug, and the changes that I, that I agree with mostly, is the fact that there's a lot of dimensions that are listed in here, and that's what I wanted to ask Sonia. Who technically verified that a 15-foot apron is appropriate for a turning radius of a car?
Oh, the 16?
The 15-foot. Because there's 20-foot and 15-foot, and here's my reason. So if you have a garage, and it's sitting there, and you're going to drive into your garage, and now we're saying that we can only have a certain amount of concrete out in front of it, because we're trying to reduce it primarily on lots that are 50-foot wide, when currently the developments are giving us 24-foot wide of concrete, basically half of the lot. That's what the concern is, the real concern. And the solution, which, please don't take offense to this, I think was well-intended, but doesn't technically work. If you have a car, and you have a 15-foot wide apron, a side approach, can now have a distance of 15 feet from the garage doors beginning, and at, after that point, has to beginning to taper back to the required driveway width of 10 feet. So you only have a 15-foot pad. The average size of a car today is 15 foot 8 inches. The average size of an SUV, which we have more of, is 16 foot 8 inches. So we are, we are creating a code that has a dimension that physically doesn't work, which means people, when they pull under the driveway, are going to be bouncing off of their driveway and getting into grass, because we've throttled it way down. These dimensions shouldn't be codified, I'm opinionated on this, because I'm an architect. The way that these dimensions should be developed is by a design professional that has to do the drawings, because then they're going to look at the individual site, they're going to understand the radius of turning cars, and they're going to do a really good design for our folks to review. This codified piece provides, if I would, as an architect, I would do this, I could get my paycheck and I could go on, but that homeowner would be frustrated forever. And we would have a little mosquito bucket pot sitting there where every time their tire dropped off their driveway. Think about this, too. You have, we've, we've forced them into having two 9-foot doors on the front of a house, which is great. Okay, it helps break that up. I agree with all that. We've got, we, we want it to match the house. All, there's great stuff in here, we just went a little bit over the top. And so now I have a 9-foot garage door here and a 9-foot garage door here. You need at least 16 inches, most people put 2 foot in between. When you go to drive in to get to that, you have to turn over to get squared up to go into your garage, so you don't drive in. And as you back out, you have to proceed completely out before you turn your tires, so you don't scrape the bumper on the side of the garage. At 15 feet with a 16-foot car, you can't do that. So I don't think that we are fully baked on this, and we have dimensions that will cause incredible harm to the new properties. And that's why, Doug, I think, I love this verbiage, I think it starts to get us there, but I don't think it addresses some of these things. And again, I, as, as an architect would scribble around, you can also, also think about the situation that if you have a garage, and you have a 9-foot garage door in front of you, and we're only allowing the pavement to come straight out from the garage, and you pull in after a long day at work, and you finally weasel your way around to there, and you get out, and you're centered up on your garage door, and you want to get out to go in your house, and there's 3 foot of snow next to you, and you only have 8 to 11 inches on the side of you, you can't even open your car door in the snow, because you've moved the snow off of there. The whole point, Design 101 will tell you, the first starting point for a car, the first box you draw for a car when you design anything, is a 16-foot box with a 2-foot radius all the way around it. That's why garages, the minimal-sized garage, is a 20-foot garage. It's so you have 2 foot in front, and 2 foot in back, and 2 foot on the side, and 2 foot on the other side. If you have a car next to you, you add another foot. These dimensions in here don't allow us to do that. And I, I think we really need to take a look back up, hold the press, go back and meet, and have someone that is in the design community that knows these dimensions vet these. Because that's, that's the, the bad news in a normal neighborhood. Then take Riverside with our curvy streets, and it's even more complicated. Take Riverside with our pie-shaped lots, either this way or this way, and it's more complicated. So I don't think a one-size-fits-all to try and solve the problem that we know is there is going to work. So that's why I'm press upon the board that we unanimously push this back and get it right before we can proceed forward and cause harm to 40 or 50% of our residents.
I did have our village engineer review the proposal that was happening as we were talking about the driveways, and what that taper requirement is, if there was anything that was recommended by the International Traffic Engineers Handbook and things like that, as we talked about the radiuses and the flares at the curb, as well as that taper rate. He said there wasn't anything in there about a taper rate. He did say that his recommendation would probably be more of 18 feet, that's your standard parking space, to come out, but he felt that 15 was workable, but would be very tight, especially for a larger vehicle.
So there, we just talked about that. 18 feet would be industry standard, is where you're going?
That's the parking space.
Right? And then we're talking about doing 10 feet with 3-foot flares, so we're at 16, so we're 2 foot below that. That 2 foot is where people's wheels drop off, and that's why we have all these little mud goobers next to everybody's little apron. I mean, you can drive around town and understand if we follow good, common-sense engineering practice, and then apply it to the curved streets, like we talked about it a little bit, that makes good sense.
3-foot flares is very common in our area. That is, it seems to be a pretty standard across, you know, the, the near west, you know, side here of Cook County. But new standards for new subdivisions, they do require or recommend in that transportation handbook, is a 5-foot flare on either side. So new subdivisions that are being built do have the 5-foot flares at the streets versus the 3-foot flares, which is what we have here. And that's for, like I said, for new construction, new streets, not necessarily the standards that, that we have in existence.
The other thing to think about when we do comparative analysis to other villages, their streets are wider. Our streets are narrower. So if you live on any of the streets that have a school next to it, a church next to it, a swimming pool next to it, or any place where people are parking in big numbers, and that parking stall is taken up, we all know we can't drive 2 cars past each other when we have cars parked in our streets. The only way to keep people from bouncing off of that when they go to turn around is to increase our flares. Because you have to start turning sooner in order to get your car. What we really need someone to start doing when they review these, and in this case, it comes down to is Ed here. Ed Bailey would have the hardest job in the world if we enacted this today, because the flares are his opportunity to weigh in if there's a unusual circumstance. So if he's going to be the one that's going to do that, what we need to do is we need to get him the design guidelines and the turning radiuses, because that's the way we should do it. And it might be one, might need to be 6-feet flares, because they're 8 inches away from the driveway, and some that are long and narrow and straight and on a good radius corner might be able to be narrower. That's perfect, but that has to be tailored. That's not what this did.
I just want to address one, one particular fact. I believe the engineering, I, I know the engineering standard for parking lots, for a 90-degree turn into a 9-by-18 parking stall, is that the width, generally it's 14, 15 feet. And that's to make a 90-degree turn into a parking space. I would think that same standard or that logic behind that standard would apply in this case, and that's probably what our engineer was going off of.
That's using turning radiuses. The challenge is, you have to do it with a car parked across from the driveway, because that's reality. You can't do your diagram, and your street's going to be always empty, because they're not always empty.
I'm not talking about the street at all, I'm talking about the apron.
Oh, you're talking about the apron up close to the garage, right. And again, again, there's a real nice turning diagrams in the graphic standards of how you get in there. And, and what it's going to do, it's going to, what, what it'll ultimately end up doing is it'll end up increasing the width a little bit, so you have an opportunity to walk around your vehicle, whether there's snow or not, and you're not walking into your grass and tripping on the curb. And it'll open up the flare farther, because as an example, right now, it, it can get as tight. If you, if your property line is 18 feet away from the front edge of your garage, and your apron's only 15, and you have 3 feet to get over to 10 feet, you, you just, you're making a little, a little spot there. The other challenge with this that we can, that I think, I want everybody in the village to understand, is if you have a driveway here and your garage is here, and the garage has a pedestrian door, a 3-foot door to go in and out of your garage, this code eliminates the opportunity to have your sidewalk right there, so when you get out, you have to have a 3-foot barrier. So now, your door's going to be there, and your sidewalk's got to be over here, and your car's over here, and you've got 3 foot of planting in between that. Again, I understand why we did that, we did that for at the front of the house, but it's applied in here to every location that way. So again, I'm very, very reluctant to proceed with an ordinance which is well-intended. It's well-intended, and we need to address how we handle the teardowns in Riverside going forward. The, the 2-bedroom, 1-bathroom bungalows and the 3-bedroom, 1.5 bathroom bungalows are going to go away. The question is, how quickly are they going to go away, and what's going to go in their place? Because they don't work in the modern 21st-century lifestyle. People want 3-car garages, so they can have 2 cars, and they can have all their strollers, their bikes, their basketballs, and all that stuff inside, and then they need a place to park their cars when they have guests come over, or they have a child that starts to drive. And if we don't find a code that does that, and we create something that doesn't work, we will have cars on yards and people unhappy. So that's why I'm asking the board to vote to rescind this, take it back, and see if we can't come at it in a, a little bit more straightforward manner, taking everybody's concerns into consideration. Anyone else?
The one other thing I would say that I agree with you, Trustee Lumsden, make sure, I guess one of the things I would say, the side-loaded garages weren't really touched at all, so that would be something we would want to look at from that perspective, whether or not some of these same requirements, because I know there are a lot of side-loaded garages that have the same issues that you're talking about.
Turning radiuses and all that stuff.
Yeah, so that would be something that, and also the distance, the 5-feet distance, right now, they would probably be non-conforming. Anyone who has, you know, further out than 5 feet, and I know several houses that have that, so.
I guess from the, I believe it was 2005, when the first design, garage design requirements were adopted, and that is when they came up with the no further than 5 feet out from the front of the house requirement for attached garages, whether it was side-loaded or front-loaded garage. So at, at that time, we had several side-load attached to garages that were immediate non-compliant, because they were the kind of garage where you turn in this way, so it kind of makes an L, and you turn in, and so the driveway is your front yard, basically.
Even though your garage is 5 foot forward, you're pulling in from the side, so the front elevation looks nice, but that, that's impossible to do on a 50-foot wide lot. That's the problem.
Well, yeah. If you don't find those on 50-foot wide...
If we have a 50-foot corner lot, you might be able to spin it around on the side and come in and that.
That's possible.
But that's what I think it's you're referring to, so. Yeah, again, I think we need to, we need to slow down, we need to take test cases a few, on a few pieces of properties, and then really work with our developer community when they come in to do this, to try and not get 3 of the same house in a row, because I think, I truthfully think that's what our preservation folks are queuing on when they went to look at this. I mean, we know this was all started when we did a burn permit or something like that, but, but again, I think that, that the end result of this, we, we need to hit a home run with this to preserve the village, and this didn't do it, unfortunately, so.
Well, one question I would say, or one thing I would bring up, the motion and the second as it currently stands, would send it back to Plan Commission. Does the motion intend for the Plan Commission to restart the whole process, including starting from new publication, brand-new public hearing, or continue the process with direction? And if with direction, is the direction for the Plan Commission to go by what was said during the discussion here, be sent the minutes and maybe a transcript, or does the board want to give specific direction to the Plan Commission? Because I know, at least Trustee Lumsden felt that direction was given previously that wasn't really followed, and, and some others remembered it more as there were comments by trustees that certain trustees hoped would be taken into consideration and maybe weren't. So those are things to consider. But the motion as it is right now is to just send it back, the way I would interpret it is, send it back for further discussion under the existing notice that takes these into account. So if that's not...
That's not my motion. My motion is, I hate to use the word "kill," but my motion is, is to stop this mess, republizize it. If we're going to impact existing property, properties, properly notify the village folks so anybody that's property could potentially be impacted, has an opportunity to attend the hearing and weigh in on what may or may not impact them.
Okay.
Because I think that, if, if we keep going down this road, there's always going to be those that, that complain to me that they weren't properly notified.
Then what I would do, Trustee Lumsden, is change your motion to simply reject the proposed ordinance. And then if that motion passes, then the whole process in order to ever get going again would be to begin it all from the beginning, and maybe put on a, a future agenda, a discussion about what you want the Plan Commission to consider.
I feel that that's the appropriate thing to do right now, just so that we follow proper process. I don't really like to belabor it, because I know we already went through all this. Problem is, I don't think we had the right people in the room when we went through it. Again, when, when they had the hearing, it was all about new construction, and then it migrated along the process, and, I mean, we all admit that, to something that then included existing homes.
So then are you amending your motion to reject the ordinance as presented?
That's, I would reject this in its entirety, and then I think our direction for what our discussion was, is to let's keep, we, we know we need to help figure out a way to preserve and help control better, and help preserve the integrity of the teardown projects, because that's what started this, right?
So the motion is then to reject the ordinance as presented? That, that's it?
Yes.
And then we need to set, do you still second that? Okay.
There's more discussion I'd like to have on that, obviously. I had the benefit of probably 10 hours of public meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this matter. They did a great job. I don't reject this, I don't think it's garbage, I don't think all the other criticisms that's leveled at it are fair. I think it's not perfect, I think it can be improved on. I think Trustee Pollak's suggestions address the issue for existing front-loaded garages. I would suggest that a better alternative than starting this process all over again, because frankly, I don't think it's going to be improved upon by starting it over, is to have our village engineer or some expert look at the numbers. It sounds like we have a couple numbers that are in dispute on this, and pursue that approach versus starting all over. It, it makes no sense to me to start the process over and get right back to what Planning and Zoning has submitted to us today.
So help me understand how we get this verbiage into a public format so that these folks can have dialogue about it, because they've never seen it. You and I have the luxury of seeing the great stuff that Doug put together. How do we, how do we do that if we don't have another hearing?
There's, it, there's a hearing right now, there's a public meeting right now, and I believe that it can be put back to staff to have experts. Planning and Zoning is not expert in 15 feet versus 18 feet. So there's no reason to start with them on that.
So...
Well, and, and I, I don't reject that, because your arguments were vetted with the village engineer. And yes, she's, they, they indicated it was tight, the numbers they indicated was tight, they didn't ignore it. The question was asked, and the engineer said that it's an acceptable amount.
And can we see the report on that? Because that's different verbiage that I haven't got. Who, who is the engineer that reviewed this and said 15-foot was appropriate? Because we should probably let the engineer know the number.
Director App already explained that.
Did Orion look at these? So if I called to Orion and I say, "Did you look at that 15-foot thing and do some vehicular diagrams?" Did we hire them to do that?
I didn't ask them to do diagrams.
I don't remember seeing Orion in the budget where we paid him to do that. I don't think that's been done. This is not technically competent. That's the problem.
Okay, but remanding it to... Okay, but remanding it to Planning and Zoning does not make it, and getting the same document back to us does not make that technically competent.
Help me with this, Mike. Because you and Doug know the protocol better than I do. How do we get it back into a scenario with a hearing when people can sit down with people that are educated, and ask them questions, and understand how it impacts their property? Because that's what a hearing's for. And at the time we had this hearing, it was all about new construction, and we brought new developers in to do it. Nobody from the existing community had the notification to know to come in, because it was all about new, new work, not existing properties.
I, I think the way we do that is we vote on your motion. And if that gets approved, then we start over again, and we do what you want.
And again, I, I think, we have, we have to do something. It's not like we, I just want to know the best process to this, and it seems to me that, that it would be fair and reasonable that we have to have a hearing. If we can say, if we can give direction that it's going to go back to P&amp;Z, and we want them to have a hearing, it's the same thing as rejecting it and doing that. So, I love this language, and I love a lot of the language in here that we've highlighted that talks about architectural character. And, and that's, that's what we really want to preserve.
Let me ask you a question. To, to, to Trustee Sedaby's point, this is a hearing, okay? Why can't we remand this back to staff with some of the issues that you have brought up tonight? And review it with staff, and then review it with our engineers, bring back a draft to this board? And we can then talk it through, rather than sending it back down and starting all over again? And, and I think, what, I think what we're doing here is giving all these people notice. And I don't think we're, we're, I agree with you 100%. I don't want to, I don't want to pass this the way it sits. I want to do it right, but I don't know if we necessarily want to start it all over again. With that, I, I agree with Trustee Sedaby. So I think we can...
That seems, that seems like the same thing, just a little different twist.
But I think we can, I think we can do this. We don't have to send this back down to Planning and Zoning. I think we should, we could do this.
So there are, there are three alternatives you really have before you. It sounds like you're all pretty much agreeing that you're not happy with it as presented, and you want further input, and actually further...
Yeah.
Okay, well, most, maybe the majority of you. But anyway, here are your three alternatives. In my opinion, under the law, there was notice of publication on a text amendment is the only thing that's required. That notice is sufficient, legally sufficient, to cover all the alternatives you have before you. Changes in the dimensions, changes regarding Trustee Pollak's. So, you can keep it here, and, and then have further meetings to hone it at this level, or you can decide, we have a Plan Commission that is supposed to consider things. We, we want their recommendation, and in fact, you've done that before. There have been times where you've had something that you had the power to decide at this level, but you wanted the Plan Commission's recommendation. So legally, you can send it back, and have them reconsider all the alternatives, either reviewing the minutes or the text of all your comments, or with a motion to give them specific direction. But you can send it back, again, without starting process over. Or, as the motion is currently stands, it would just simply reject the proposed ordinance. Then you would have to start over, meaning new publication in, in the newspaper, the whole process would begin. But...
So the only difference in those two scenarios is republication?
Correct, and I don't know that, I don't know that you all, I mean...
And again, I think, and again, the only reason that I'm kind of leaning that way, not hell-bent on it, but we swung, and I know we did it legally, but there's a lot of people that didn't get that notice. And again, I think we need to add to our agenda, talking about that in its entirety with all of our, all of our notifications. Because I'm, I know we're doing them legally, but I don't think we're hitting a home run, because our constituents are, are pissed at us all the time and saying we're not being transparent. So, it's, it's legal, but it ain't working.
Well, and sometimes it's required. I mean, I've had individuals claim that they, they know that a process was designed to hide a zoning issue because it was published, and no one reads a newspaper, and you have to tell them. It would be invalid if we didn't do that, because it's legally required, and any attempts to change the legislation has been, well, I'm sorry, Bob, but you know why, it hasn't passed, so.
I think you've got more notice taken now than you ever did.
Well, yeah, and I, and I, that's the point too.
But again, I don't, I don't, if we can handle this here, because I'm thinking about, what would P&amp;Z look at? They're going to look at zoning issues. We already know what they think. They want us to try and narrow up the driveways a little bit, they want us to try and put a little bit tighter screws to it. We don't want to do it in some of the dimensional ways that are here. We want to figure out how to fix the turning radiuses and things like that. So if we do assign it to staff to bring an engineer in to, to do it, and give us a report that says, "Here's a diagram of a property that's 25-foot off, and how someone would roll into a garage," and that, again, I think what will come out of that, my guess is, I've been through those, you'll find out that there's so, so many different scenarios, we, we don't want it to be that logical in here. But I think we have to go through that process, and then we owe it to everybody in the village to share what our results are before we vote on it, so they can have some input.
Yeah, and so that can be done at this level if you so choose. As far as notice issues, rather than republication, you know, you, which really, as I suggested, probably doesn't have a great impact anyway, although it's technically required, you can, staff can send out notices, they can send out e-blasts, they can point out that, you know, that, those things can be done, and still be at your level, and still have all the technical requirements met, but achieve the transparency that, it sounds like, that most of you are looking for.
Okay.
So the way I understand it...
You would have to amend your motion again.
Again, yeah, that's fine.
And I don't think President Sells has ever had three amendments to a motion.
I'm, I'm scheduled to be here all night, so it doesn't matter. I will amend my motion to reject this as it currently stands, but, but not have to republish the notification.
Okay, this, this can be done, it may make a suggestion.
How about you do it?
I'll make a suggestion. I'm not doing it, I'm just making a suggestion. The motion would be to refer this back to staff to consider the impact on existing, existing properties, and to present alternatives for having it reviewed by appropriate consultants regarding the radii and so forth.
The technical.
I'm fine with that. And then how, how long, because we're going to need some time to meet with...
Right, which, which is another thing, which is another important thing. In order to not have to republish, it, it needs to be continued to a date certain. That's a very good point. And so it should give, it can be continued again, if needed, as you recall, that's happened here before. So it should give a reasonable amount of time. It's probably not going to be the next meeting, is my guess, so.
I don't know what the schedule, what October 18th would give us.
We have a budget during October, so, I mean, could we, could we bring this out to January?
Of course, yeah, of course, as long as it's a date certain.
Yeah, I'd say the second meeting in January? Is that making...
I'm fine with that.
I think January is excessive.
Yeah, right, right. Go to the next board.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, we have, we have December, we have, you know, you have October, which is budget. We have a lot on the agenda in November, then you've got Christmas.
And it's going to, they're going to, it's going to take an engineer some time to really go and look at properties and vet some of these.
Right.
Because that's what, that's what I did, and, and it just becomes a mushroom.
Well, I just feel it's two months is plenty of time, and as our village attorney said, we can always extend it again. Otherwise, inevitably, what we do is you wait till the last minute, and it goes to the last minute.
Well, but our staff is going to get it in front of the engineer? Because I, I would love to sit down, Doug, you and I, and an engineer would be able to, with Sonya, be able to hammer this thing out, and have something to present pretty quick.
Or I'd turn it back on Director App. I mean, what's a reasonable timeframe, do you think, to re-engage and have this looked at and responded to?
I would say probably would need a couple of months, just for them to be able to schedule time, come out, meet with us, go over the concerns, maybe visit some properties, do a chore, look at those kind of things, work out some scenarios, do some turning diagrams. I would say that would be pushing us up to probably December, and I know, you know, with the Christmas season, and, and some of the other things we have on there, so.
And for the architect and engineer to write up a report, provide it to us, too, in addition to any type of site visits.
So, I would say we could probably have it ready by December, but I don't think it would be hurt by putting, putting off to January, so.
Well, shall we target the first meeting in December?
Okay.
Okay.
Will the engineers also address the non, the existing non-conforming properties?
No, that's a, that's, that's not really for an engineer to, to comment on. Trustee Pollak...
I'm trying to be facetious, but how are we going to address the non-conforming properties?
Well...
Forty percent of the residents.
Right, so, so...
Well, but it's not conforming yet.
We're trying to get it so that this doesn't have an impact that forces 40% of the properties to go non, legal non-conforming.
Right, so, so, so one way, one way that can be done is for Trustee Pollak's suggestion, which is just a suggestion, be circulated so that people can review that.
Yeah.
And then comment on whether it's enough.
This gets us 90% of the way there on the existing, but then we've got to deal with the new stuff.
I would, before this becomes fact, Sonya, is, is 40% of the village attached garages?
I don't believe it's that high.
Now, it's also detached, it's also detached. Front loaded, side loaded.
This, this, that's a correct statement. This, not, this, this, if we approve this today, it would take some detached garages and make them non-conforming. Because not everybody's garage tapers to 10 feet at 20 feet away. This, this would probably take 60 to 70 to 80% of the properties...
I'm sorry.
Right?
Just, that is already in the code, that you only get 20 feet, and then it's supposed to taper. That is already in the code, and has been in the code for...
So those would, those would already be...
10-plus, more years.
Legal non-conformities.
Exactly.
But, but there's a code provision in there.
Is, is the, are detached garages affected at all by this code?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. If you say positive, it's the fact that you can put it three foot away from your house and still be non-combustible. I mean, there's a, there's a, I mean, and I don't want to get into the details, I think, because we really need to go page by page and think through some of these.
But, but where, we have it now, this, your motion that you're making alleviates your issue as it sits tonight. And this would be further discussed by the board, by Trustee Lumsden, and our engineers, and Sonya, and hopefully all will be resolved.
And then anybody watching who's here, if you have any questions regarding that, I'm more than willing to be the liaison for that, because I've spent the last three weeks drilling into it, so.
Is he now getting called over as I was?
And to be clear, the intent was never to, the intent was never to negatively impact detached garages.
The purpose was to encourage it, so that would have been an unintended consequence.
Well, if your garage burns down, and you can't rebuild it as it is, you know, that, that would be an unintended consequence.
But again, so, but again, I think that that's what we're also trying to, trying to fix here, right? Whether it's detached or non-detached, if it's an existing condition, and it burns down, you should be able to build it back the way it was. And if you own a piece of property currently, right now, and you have a desire to renovate it, you should be able to go at the code that we currently have, and not be impacted by this change. At the same token, we need to work really, really hard to find a way, as we tear the homes down that don't work in the 21st century, how the ones that go back in complement our village and don't hurt our village. That's the challenge, right? Right, we got to vote.
We, we have the motion, and it also would include the December 6th date. So it's continued, so for anyone, it will be on an agenda December 6th. It cannot be on any agenda before December 6th, but it might not be completed December 6th. The board still has the privilege to continue it, but again, to a date certain, that will be done at a public meeting.
May I encourage anyone that hasn't already? Please reach out to Trustee Lumsden.
How do we know, how do we know when the zoning meetings on this issue are happening?
Well, the, the way, the way it's currently queued up, the zoning meeting, the Plan Commission meeting is concluded. The current motion does not have this going back to Plan Commission. It, it has it coming back to this board on December 6th to consider two main areas. The actual workability of the way the, the requirements of driveway dimensions are, are in the code, and also to consider alleviating the, the creation of a large amount of legal non-conformity. And specifically, I think there's some consideration of what Trustee Pollak has proposed. And that really isn't a staff issue. And then, so people should be able to review that. I'm sure he would share it publicly. And that will all be reconsidered by this board on December 6th.
And so we, and periodically, that's a great point, we can, we can publish, hey, here's a, here's a draft of where we're going with this, at any point in time between now and December 6th, to share with village folks, so that they can weigh in.
Well, written that, well, certainly, individual trustees can share ideas publicly, but the board can't really discuss this as a group until December 6th.
Can the staff put out a draft?
Yes.
So people have a chance to review it, and then go back and apply it to their own properties?
Yes, as long as the board, yes, as long as the board is comfortable with staff doing that, when the board hasn't had a chance to really consider it yet. That, you need to be comfortable with that, because remember, you as a group, once you continue it to December 6th, you can't discuss it, except individually or among two of you, before that time. Because you'd be, you know, it's, that's when you're continuing it to.
For point of clarification, is the expectation on the 6th that they would be voting on something?
Well, I don't...
Or like we're presenting an actual ordinance? Or are we presenting our findings for them to discuss?
Yeah, so...
And then for us to incorporate into an ordinance?
The way, the way that can be done is staff can submit an ordinance, you know, if they think it might...
So, so couldn't we say that on December 6th, we're going to have it listed in here under our considerations? We're going to, as a board, we're going to consider the new language that the staff came up with. We're going to get a chance to present it to the village. They can have a chance to mull it over, and then we vote on it the next meeting or one after, depending upon...
Correct, correct. It can be put on for discussion on December 6th, which would bind you not to take final action, but you could then take final action...
That makes more sense.
At the next meeting.
Mike, does that solve your concern?
Yeah, I just have a question on six. I don't agree with the law. It's up to the chair.
President?
I've lost control hours ago.
President Ballerin?
Mike Foley, 411 Salborne in Riverside. I think one of the big things that, and I don't know how well or often it was spoken about in the zoning meetings, is just the sheer lot size that we're dealing with. And Sonya, you can help me, the minimum lot size to build on this town is 10,000 square feet?
Correct.
Is it 7,000? 7,000. So there's a house across the street from the swim club, a brand-new home near the entrance. That lot is way less than 7,000 square feet yet. They built a home on it with a front-loaded garage. I think the curse of Riverside is a builder, and I've, I've talked to many architects and shown them many drawings of 50-foot lots, and tried to be creative in how to get the cars behind the house. I don't like a front-loaded garage, and when I built my home, I actually offset my one-car garage, I have a three-car garage, but from the street, you see half of one door. And it's tricky for my wife to get her car in. I drive a larger car, so I have to go around and park in the back. With a 50-foot lot with 10% setbacks, you now just lost 10 feet of your lot. If you want a 10-foot driveway, there's another 10-foot. And if I have to keep my driveway a foot off the lot line, there's another foot. So now I have a 29-foot house, 29-foot wide house, which really is about the width of this room, maybe a couple of feet larger. But if I have eaves that hang over, now my interior walls are even closer in. So I might have a 25-foot wide house. I don't think people are going to want that. I really don't. And how do we go in the back? Well, we've tried sawtooth garages, parking on angles, trying to get the car to pull in this way, but then it's very hard to get out if you own a larger vehicle. I think getting a car, a garage, all the way into the back isn't a great thing, you know, someone that's going to spend a tremendous amount of money to build a home in this town. Average depth of the lot in Riverside is a hundred and sixty feet. You want to have your car that far back from your house? And then walk to your house in the rain with your kids and your bags, and your car is all the way in the back of your lot? I don't think that's too desirable in the way that people want to live these days. Your question about what happens to all these properties on Quincy and Burlington, someday when those go away, right now, those are non-compliant lots, because they're all too small to build on. And then what happens then? I mean, the only thing left with a forty-foot lot is a front-loaded garage. So, I think, you know, we need to focus on aesthetics and not be too harsh on wiping out and making, I'm going to say at least probably considerably twenty-five to thirty percent of the homes in this town with front-loaded garages non-compliant right off the bat. That's going to be a hardship for a lot of people. So, this is my opinion.
Thanks, Mike.
Just to make some clarification, are you expecting staff to make a village-wide mailing for the December sixth meeting? Or is, are, is us talking tonight, E-flashes, and what we can do, good enough? I mean.
That's a really good question. I mean, that's, that's why I was talking about, I think we need to have that discussion on how we better communicate. I mean, it feels horrible when everybody thinks that we're not being transparent, and I think everybody up here is really trying to be very transparent, right? We just have.
I think, I think we are very transparent, and I think, I think part of, I mean, we do what we can.
Does it, how about on that newsletter? Don't we have a little flip-flop newsletter? Does that go to everybody in town?
The mailing?
Anybody that has, receives a utility bill, so if you, it goes to the renter versus the property owner, the property owner.
Well, I'm fine with that. Let's just get a, let's have the staff put it in there saying, hey, here's.
I have to see when it goes out and timing and stuff, because we do, we bill half of the village one month and another half, so depending on timing, that might not be feasible.
We have to come up with a way to communicate.
But that's, that's a different question. I think for this particular issue, this meeting has been a pretty public meeting. Between this and an E-flash, I think you've gotten your, we've gotten the message out. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Kathy, can, can you please call the roll so we can?
Trustee Pollock.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumpston.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
No.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, fellow board members.
We move on. I would like to, once again, maybe try to move up the ordinance on the B and B, just because we have so many people here and they've been here for an hour longer than they think they, they thought, so without any, without any issue, can we move on to letter C under the ordinance resolutions? And Sonya, can you just give us a brief updated, the ordinance? I know we would be talking about issues and changes, but if you could just give us something brief to help us start, that would be great.
So, at the last meeting, you had a draft ordinance before you, and you had asked for some additional changes to be made. Those included increasing the licensing fee. It included changing the way that the occupancy is calculated, so moving from one guest per two hundred square feet. We had talked about limiting it to a certain number of people per room. At the last meeting, you asked us to follow the building code. So, according to the building code, sleeping room must be a minimum of seventy square feet, and that allows for one occupant. A room occupied by more than one person shall contain fifty square feet per occupant. So, if it's going to sleep two people, it needs to be at least a hundred square feet. If it's going to sleep four people, then it needs to be at least two hundred square feet. So, so the code change incorporates that. It also puts in there a capacity on additional visitors. So, the total number of persons at the vacation rental cannot exceed the number of guests and their children, and so that's that per-room number, whatever that ends up being for a particular vacation rental there. So, the guests that are there, that are allowed to be there, the owner and licensee, the co-owner, manager, and their family members, and up to four additional friends or service providers. So, that'd be maximum occupancy. Again, you asked that there be a maximum of four visitors, i.e. friends of owners or service providers, but not like the actual vacation rental guests. So, this would be in addition to those people, no more than four. So, that has been incorporated into the ordinance. The changes still incorporate no outdoor activity between ten PM and eight AM, so following our quiet hours. And then it also prohibits the utilization of a vacation rental as a venue for weddings, conferences, parties, or other events, regardless of the number of attendees. And it adds in a village board approval process for the approval of a license. So, any new license would need to come to the village board for approval. For those vacation rentals that are located within a residential district, neighbor notification would be required. And then it also requires for that first renewal for it to come back with a report before the board before that renewal can be issued. I believe that touches on the, the major changes since the last meeting.
Okay, this afternoon, I sent all the trustees an email stating about the petition that I received. It's three hundred-plus names on this petition. I would just like to read the note that went out with the petition for the record, even though I know you all got this. To the Honorable Village of Riverside Board of Trustees, the undersigned Village of Riverside residents respectfully request the board to rescind the ordinance permitting vacation rentals in the residential zoned areas. The property of 130 Mishaw is a commercial operation, and as a result, the experience of living near the property has changed to that of a commercially zoned area for the residents nearby. We live in a residential neighborhood and want to maintain that experience. Vacation rentals have nega, have negatively impacted the peacefulness and quality of life in our neighborhood in a significant way. As neighbors of the only proprietor in the residential area of the village to have an active vacation rental license, 130 Mishaw, we have experienced excessive noise throughout the day and evening hours, dozens of visitors parking on the street in masks, blocking traffic, and occurrences of disrespectful behavior. This is not the kind of activity we should invite into our tranquil, friendly-oriented, family-oriented neighborhood. No matter how many people or the volume of nights allowed, vacation rentals bring in a large, vacation rentals bring in large-scale events that disrupt our daily neighborhood experience. It is difficult, if not impossible, to manage the event, activity and the impact on the neighbors. The residents of Riverside should not have to shoulder the burden of the outcome, of this outcome for the financial goals of a single household. Vacation rentals have proven to be the wrong decision for the residential area of the village. The action of this business in the residential area has failed its neighbors. This, the ordinance does not properly uphold the rights of the current tax-paying residents, and we ask that the board correct the negative impact that this is taking not only on our neighborhood, but for all Riverside. Homeowners should not be allowed to rent out their residences as event spaces. And along with the petition was a very well-diagrammed map that showed that the, obviously, three hundred people don't live on Mishaw. They had a very big cross-section of, of residents that signed this petition. I'm going to try to keep this, this time maybe a little better than I did with the, with the garages. So, I would like to start by, by just saying something, then I'll open it up for you, for you all to talk. I would ask that you, you know, keep your comments respectful and to a minimum, and I, you know, I won't shut anyone down, but I'd like to keep this moving. Then I will come back. I will ask Lance to give us our, our options as a board, what we can do legally. And then I'll ask for a motion in a second with those options, and then we can discuss it. But I would like to start by just briefly reading something to you all. I would like to start by apologizing for the issue that many residents have been dealing with due to our current licensing scheme for vacation rentals. It was never my intention for this ordinance to be used in this manner. This issue has been frustrating to you all, and we will do our best tonight to alleviate this problem within the confines of the law. Secondly, I am disgusted by the inflammatory accusations leveled by some at staff and elected officials, which I know in my heart to be baseless. Riverside enjoys a cross-section of racial, sexual, and cultural diversity in both its population and staff, and to claim otherwise is grossy, incorrect, and unfair. Anyone who'd like to speak, please raise your hand and go to the podium. Now's your chance. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jennifer Partridge, and I live at 247 Shenstone. And I came to speak about vacation rentals, but right now, my head is spinning from the garage thing. Because I'm pretty sure I'm non-conforming, and so I'm, I'm sort of freaking out. Anyway, that aside.
You're still, you're still conforming as we speak.
Okay, okay. That aside, I'm here to speak on behalf of, you know, to your point, neighbors and residents that don't live in close proximity to the current business. I haven't been impacted by the business at our residence, although I have been dropping my daughter at central school. The traffic and congestion there is, is really noticeable, even during the week. But that being said, in talking to many, many people throughout the village, I have yet to encounter a single person that would want a vacation rental next door to them or across the street, even in a pared-back way. The sentiment seems pretty consistent out there, that this just doesn't make sense in the residential areas of Riverside. So, I would urge the board to rescind this ordinance, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else would like to speak? I didn't mean to scare you off. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Melissa Jergens. I live at 133 Mishaw, so I am one of the Mishaw people. But I think the letter, thank you for reading that, really sums up a lot of the thoughts that, that we've discussed and experienced and felt. I would just say one thing to add to that. One of the components of the ordinance is to allow for sixty nights per year, and most of the nights that are filled up are weekends. So, if you look at it that way, that's more than half of the weekends in a year, that that's, becomes part of our day-to-day life. So, sixty nights is, is quite a few. Certainly, you spoke to, you know, the volume of cars and the noise and all of that, so I think that's already been well addressed. I would say one additional point I would make is that by bringing a vacation rental into the property, just, it changes the experience to one of a very transient neighborhood. You're used to walking up and down the street, knowing your neighbors, enjoying them, and instead, you have just a different group there every weekend. And while they might be lovely people and wonderful events, it's just, it changes it for the neighbors that live there. And I think we prefer our quiet and well-known experiences with our neighbors. There is some concern that we've talked about with regard to property values, just a few passing conversations I've had with realtors, talking about how would this impact my property No hard facts necessarily to share with you, but I think it probably is quite obvious that if there's a business across the street versus a quiet residential street, that that has an impact on potential buyers. Simple things like having showings or open houses happen on the weekends. If the street is lined with ten cars and only one row of cars can get passed at a time, that becomes a topic of conversation if someone was trying to sell their home. So, I think that's all that I have to say. Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, with, go on, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Hey, good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Kevin Tabor. I've been a resident of Riverside for over twenty-eight years. My wife has been a resident for over sixty years. I don't get affected as much with the vacation rental thing as the people on, on Mishaw. But just as, as an example, for me, it's a respect thing. Respect for your neighbors, respect for your neighbors' privacy, respect for their right to not have cars parked in front of their houses, all those things. Two years ago, I put a addition, a garage addition on my property. And as part of that process, I had to get a signed note from all the adjacent properties letting them know that I was going to be putting a garage out. What's the reason for that? There's only one reason for that, it's respect, that I'm going to put a structure in the back of my yard that's going to affect their properties, the look, whatever. I had to get surveys, all this stuff. So, it's really a respect thing. The vacation rental is a business. It belongs in a business district. It really doesn't belong in residential areas. It's really quite simple. We moved in this community because of the people, the, the community, the, it's quiet. Riverside's a quiet town. Trees, the landscaping, the people. Let's keep businesses in the business district and keep the residential, residential. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin. We actually, a few more options have come up since we've talked. Lance, can you outline what we can and cannot do tonight?
The current structure for the vacation rentals is that it exists in the residential neighborhoods in the zoning code as a permitted use, but there are no regulations. And this was done, the regulations that allow for a license and the requirement and the conditions and all are outside of the zoning code. So, the options you have before you are, what you've been considering so far is leaving it alone, or amending it to add restrictions that would attempt to address the problems that are perceived by the board, given the public input. Or three, to end the vacation rental licensing process and ultimately to take it out of the zoning code as a permitted use. Tonight, what you have before you on the agenda is an amended ordinance. So, you could vote to not make the changes, which would be a final vote tonight, to leave it as it is, or to make the changes with some modifications that we would have to work out word for word tonight in order to take that action. Or if the board is inclined to repeal the licensing, it can vote on that tonight, but you would have an ordinance written with the exact language repealing and providing some whereas clauses for you at the next meeting for final action. So, you can vote on it tonight to repeal, but it would have to come before you one more time. And then following that, if repeal was the desire of the board, we would recommend beginning the process to do the necessary text amendment to take that permitted use out of the zoning code, because it won't, it doesn't belong there anymore. And that we'd have to follow that process with, what we've been talking about in the garage context, publication, a public hearing, I mean, it, it would all be kind of moot in a way, but we have to go through that process as a, as a technical matter. Sometimes that process seems too small a notice for some, and sometimes it's like, do we have to go through all that? You do have to go through it in order to change any word in your zoning code. So, so those are your options. Is that clear enough?
Thank you, Lance.
Before we just move on, I just wanted to, we have a lot of people here, and out of respect for their patience tonight and being here, I just want the minutes to reflect how many people were here, and I'd also like a show of hands who agree with the three speakers who spoke tonight, and I'd like the minutes to reflect that.
There's about a half buzz out there.
Okay, thank you. That's all, I just wanted that on record.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vacation rental ordinance altogether.
Okay, so that would be the section of the code with the licensing process.
Do we have a second?
Would that rescind it for the business district and the residential district?
Correct. If you repeal the ordinance, it's gone, you know, so you could put regulations in place that, about licensing in a different district.
But when it goes, when it goes back down to the PZC to do the cleanup.
Yeah.
At that time, since we're already making the notification, we can then, if the PZC recommends it, we can, we can add it to the business district.
But it would be gone from the business district at that point? And we'd have to add it back in?
Yeah, they can add it, they can add it in at that meeting, and then we can.
Right, well, the current zoning code allows it in the business district, and that won't be gone by tonight's ordinance. It would still be there. What would be gone is the licensing, and so that could be redone by this board without going to zoning, because it would still be a permitted use in the business district.
But not in the residential district.
Correct. By repeal, well, right, we would, it would be technically, you couldn't get a license anywhere, but you could reconsider regulations for the districts you wanted in at some future date. But right now, since you don't have any applications and you don't have any vacation rentals in the business district, it won't matter.
You do have one application for a vacation rental license in the business district.
In the business district?
Yes, it's in one of the condo buildings that's right there in Forest in the business district. We received that back in, end of July.
Well, so if the motion, if the desire is to keep the existing regulations as they apply to licensing in the non-residential business district, and just, the motion could be that, and then the ordinance that we would prepare for you would reflect that. It would simply be taking out the licensing possibility for R1, and then when, we would remove it from the zoning code only as to the residential. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
If, if everybody's happy with the existing licensing and regulations as they apply to a business district, that would be fine. Okay. And so then we really do need to prepare an ordinance, yeah, which we would have anyway, but that's all the more reasons.
You need to be making all the...
Yes.
I want to make sure, so what's the process then?
So, process would be a motion or a ordinance would come back to us. Correct. That would reflect, assuming it passes, it would remove the applicability of the eligibility for licensing of vacation rentals in any residential district, and then would simply leave the references as they exist in commercial districts, and that license could still be processed, in fact.
And can we do that without going back to planning and zoning and restarting the process?
No. Either way, we want to remove permitted use for vacation rental in the zoning code as permitted in the residential district. It's not, you don't want to leave that there. You really don't, if you don't want it there. It just, I mean, I realize, you know, you could say, hey, we don't have a license, you need a license, but it's just awkward, someone could try to claim, then I can do whatever I want there.
But if we remove it altogether, that doesn't need to go back to planning and zoning.
Yeah, yeah, it does, because it's in your zoning code, and you can't touch your zoning code. But if people like the regulations, if no one objects to the licensing as it applies to the business district, it makes sense to leave it there and for us to prepare the ordinance that way, so you don't have to then pass another ordinance.
I know this is frustrating, but we're trying to make a decision tonight, and there's some technicalities that are keeping us from doing that. So, I go back to the discussion we had last time. Maybe the ordinance in front of us is not the proper ordinance, but I'd like to make a decision tonight instead of prolonging this for two more months. And I think that can be done through maybe some modifications to the existing ordinance before us.
First of all, it's not two more months, because we can make the decision tonight to rescind this in the residential area, and it's done. What then needs to be done is cleaning up the PZC and cleaning up the code that will then take it out of our zoning, and we can modify it so we can still maintain it in the business district. Long... Correct? Am I getting there?
Yeah. Tonight, unless you pass this version with these modified with some minor changes, I am going to ask, you need to bring a final ordinance back before you at the next meeting. But it will be one whose parameters you've all agreed you agree on tonight, if it's rescinding it, taking it out of the residential neighborhoods and leaving the licensing in place in the business district. That will be on your very next meeting, and you can pass it presumably with the exact same vote, because it will be what you've decided you want tonight, and then staff can be directed to immediately begin the process to clean up the zoning code so it's consistent with that.
That's only a housekeeping issue.
Yes, but both of them can be viewed as housekeeping issues, really. Even the bringing it back next time is simply a written form of what you've decided tonight. You just, as a legal matter, when you pass an ordinance, you want that ordinance to be signed by the clerk and the village president, and that can't be done tonight. So, you need to vote on the writing, but it would be if it's what your, the motion is on the floor now or maybe coming to...
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vacation rental ordinance in the residential districts.
Do I have a second? I, okay, I was going to say, I have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Yes.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lamson.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Sadebe.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
So, that passes, and as I said, I'll...
So, the discussion I had with Jessica prior to the meeting was that order to simplify things, as long as it was unanimous vote, whatever the vote was, we needed a ordinance to replace that.
On consent. So, it's only if you had people who wanted a voted...
So, how, we still have the opportunity to have vacation rentals in the business district.
Correct.
How do we go about modifying, if we want to, some of these good ideas that came up?
Well, by asking Jessica to put it on an agenda as a discussion item and then decide if you want to make changes as they apply to the business district.
Because, I mean, I think we've, we've experienced, we're a lot smarter now, right? So... Well, one other thing we didn't discuss, and everyone should be aware, what does that mean about the existing license?
Okay, any existing licenses that have been issued are a property right that have to be honored until their expiration.
And when is the expiration?
It would expire November 30th.
November 30th?
Or upon completion of their 60-day...
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, although technically the license would still exist, it might not be able to be exercised, but that must be honored. That's a property right in the system. It's only good, though, for the length of the license, in my opinion. That's why I believe you have the power to take it away.
And then I guess another point of clarification, we discussed at a previous meeting, making complaints anonymously. And I think we found out that you really can't make a complaint anonymously, can you? If you don't want to be the subject of a targeted campaign against you for complaining about something.
If someone receives a complaint, unless it's something where the police requires a person's name to be on a citation or verify, staff does do its best to protect. So, if someone provides a Freedom of Information request.
Correct.
Also known as a FOIA request, we do redact those names.
And the PAC and longstanding precedent has upheld that practice.
So, we do everything in our power to protect those that are violating certain complaints.
So, if a resident doesn't provide his name, his or her name, it's not like you can FOIA phone records?
No, we wouldn't provide people's private information.
Got it. Okay, I just want to again, make that clear for everyone else.
If they provide their name, it would remain confidential unless they specifically said, "You can give out my name."
Correct. That's an important point, that you, not only can you make an anonymous complaint, but the name will be protected automatically even if the village is aware of your name.
And some residents will, for example, if they have a very, you know, general email address, they won't provide necessarily their contact information, but they'll send either a department head or myself an email, and provided anonymously, then we'll contact the appropriate departments or parties to try to rectify the issue.
Yes, just as you said. Pollak?
This is where I get on the soapbox, because I feel so strongly about this particular issue. I think the public should know that if they see an issue in their neighborhood, criminal, civil, or criminal, or zoning, or property maintenance, or whatever, they are anonymous when they call the village. We depend on that, because if we're going to find all the problems in this village, we're going to have to hire a whole bunch of inspectors, and you don't want that, because that costs money.
Now, the only caveat, though, is that the inspectors, when they do go out on a complaint, it's no guarantee that a notice of violation will be issued, because they do have to see it.
Right.
Especially...
Right, or they have to get approval from adjacent members to access their property to view the complaint.
Correct, but they still, right, they have to see it, right. I mean, one way or another, legally be in a place and observe it. They can't rely on an anonymous complaint in order to issue a citation. That they can't do.
Sonia, can you go through B? The ordinance amending the village code.
Oh, yes, next item, sorry.
B.
Threw me there.
Or C, I'm sorry.
Depends what became.
So, back in July, we had a public hearing for a sign variance, and as part of that review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they asked that a code amendment be considered to allow for wall signs for businesses that have rear walls that face the railroad tracks in the B1 district. The village board reviewed that commission's recommendation and concurred with their recommendation, and directed staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission to look into a code amendment. The board was in agreement, the businesses with frontage on the railroad, regardless of what business district they're in, should be allowed to have a sign on that frontage. Additionally, prior to the village board meeting about that sign variance, it was discovered that the restrictions on illumination hours in the sign code.
Mike.
Apply only to the B2 district.
Mike.
So, there were no restrictions on the hours of illumination in the B1. When you were discussing the sign variance, you limited the hours for the signs to be illuminated from 10 p.m., from the opening of the business to 10 p.m. So, after 10 p.m., the lights would have to be turned on. So, the existing code for our wall signs states that wall signs are only permitted on each building wall that faces a public street. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the text amendment that would incorporate those changes that would allow businesses that don't have frontage on a street to have a sign or a rear-facing wall sign to be allowed facing the railroad tracks. They also, the amendment also addressed off-street parking, public alley. So, states that signs shall be oriented to face the public street, off-street parking, or public alley. And this addition then would allow businesses that do not have frontage on a street to be able to have a wall sign without the need for a variance. The proposed amendment also states where a property faces a railroad right-of-way, a sign may be provided on the wall facing the railroad right-of-way. That was before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the language and did have some minor changes to it. They wanted it to be a little bit more specific about facing the railroad track, so that language was amended to say, any property adjacent to a railroad right-of-way, so you could just say, "I have a wall facing the railroad, so I should be able to have a sign there," to try and make that a little bit more specific. Additionally, they reviewed the recommendation for illumination that would say that any sign adjacent to and directly facing a residentially zoned property could not be illuminated between the hours of 10 p.m. and 8 a.m. They wanted to expand that. Their expectations were that the illumination for signs that faced any residentially zoned property, regardless of whatever, separated by a street or an alley. So, if you are across the street from a residential property, you would be, have this restriction on the hours of having your sign illuminated. Additionally, if you're across the railroad tracks from a business district, if there's a residence across the railroad tracks from the business, if it's adjacent to it, they would be restricted to this 10 p.m. shut-off time for illuminated signs. So, those amendments were made, and so the ordinance before you has those changes incorporated into it. It was a unanimous recommendation of approval for the text amendment with those minor modifications to it, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Motion by trustee Peters, second by trustee Pollak.
Yeah, and this is, the motion is to accept the recommendation and adopt the ordinance that, as presented, is recommended by the planning.
Do we have any discussion?
So, right now, and again, I'm more worried about light bleed. Do we have light bleed covered? So, if I have a house and I'm sitting across the street from a business, can it shine light out, or does it have to reflect back onto the building?
In the B1 district, we do allow facelit, so they can shine out.
They can shine out.
Well, we do have, we do have light regulations or luminous regulations.
Only in the B2 district.
See, that's...
Now, caveat, in our, our B1 district is primarily on Harlem Avenue, but we do have some sections that are on Burlington and Quincy that come in and are more in that mixed-use transitional...
It's going to be right at the transitional pieces, where you're going to have a situation where the sign may be on at 9:30 at night, and if it's outward casting, it could bother someone on another piece of property. Right?
Right.
So, how do we help fix that?
Okay, can we include the light bleed wattage from the B1 to the B2?
We can do that. We can add the illumination restrictions that we did for B2 to the transitional commercial if we want to, or we can do it to the entire B1 district if we want to.
I mean, actually, we have, actually, I'm sorry. It's, "Gooseneck reflectors and lights are permitted on ground signs and walls. The reflectors sought to concentrate the illumination upon the area of the sign as to prevent glare upon the street or adjacent properties." So, maybe we already have... It's subjective, but, yeah. Right, because I mean, what you want is you want the light to hit the sign, want the light to blow by the sign and go into somebody's bedroom window that they're trying to put their kid to bed.
We generally have quite a bit of distance when you're talking about rear signs along the railroad tracks, because you have the railroad easement, the railroad tracks, the railroad easement to the next house, so it's a good 100 feet?
Yes.
Maybe there's enough teeth in there now.
Kathy, I'm sorry.
I had another, did they discuss the hours? I know we talked about 10 p.m. How did they come up with 8 a.m.? Was that something that was discussed, or was that just part of the quiet hours, the hours?
We just, staff went with the quiet hours. That was also, it just seemed that, in the discussion, that was kind of some of the numbers that came up by the village boards. That's what staff put in there, and they didn't have any issue with that.
I don't know what people think, 8 a.m. It doesn't seem like you'd ever turn them on in the morning. I mean, I may be a little more permissive, but like 7 a.m., but I don't, I don't know.
(inaudible) may not be illuminated between the hours of 10 a.m., 10 p.m. and 7 a.m.
I don't feel strongly about it, but...
And this is only where they're across from residential.
So, if you're not across from residential, this restriction doesn't apply.
Got it.
This is only if you're immediately adjacent to and directly facing a residential property.
And I would think, I would assume most businesses start at 8 o'clock, so they're not going to come in early to turn it on.
It would be on a timer. These are going to be on a timer.
Yeah, typically, they'll put them on timers.
Try this one more time. Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lamson.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Sadebe.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye. Thank you.
I'd like it to be noted that that only took one motion and one second. We're getting better.
That was my motion, too.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, we need to talk about who's making the motions.
There you go.
The next point is considerations. The first thing has to do with an ADA accommodation at 412 Bartram. Is the applicant here tonight?
The applicant was not able to make it. He was ill this week, and so his family was not able to make it. They were going to try and see if the caregiver could make it tonight, but they were unable to secure somebody to come. But they did ask, because they do want this to move along in the process, and then, you know, it's more than a one-meeting process, to at least have the discussion and see if you guys are amenable to their request. So, we received a building permit for a new patio at 412 Bartram. However, the existing structures in the lot exceeded the maximum allowed impervious surfaces. So, the applicant was seeking to remove an existing deck and patio and replace with a new patio, which was larger than the existing deck and patio area. So, therefore, staff, since it already exceeded and it would not be within the existing footprint, we cannot issue the building permit as requested. A zoning ordinance does restrict the amount of impervious surfaces on a lot. For lots that exceed that amount and are non-conforming, they are allowed to maintain and replace those areas, however, they cannot enlarge them. The applicant informed the village that the homeowner is disabled and that they were seeking to provide a safe outdoor space for him to enjoy and utilize his backyard. The applicant, who is the owner's guardian, has requested an Americans with Disability Act or ADA accommodation be considered for this patio, and they submitted a letter requesting the village approve an ADA accommodation for the project. The property at 412 Bartram is zone R1A. Our zoning district, there, it's R1A, so the amount of impervious surfaces on a lot is restricted to 50% of the lot area. The lot currently does not meet our minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, so it's already a substandard lot, and so their impervious surfaces coverage is already at 70.2%. If the existing deck and patio areas are removed and only the house and driveway and walkways remain, the impervious surface coverage on the lot would be 62%, so still over the maximum 50% allowed. The homeowner had initially requested a 1,400-square-foot patio in their backyard to replace the various outdoor areas with one continuous concrete patio, and this would have increased the property's impervious surface to 82%. I had some discussions with the home, with the guardian, and the homeowner has now come back and requested a smaller patio area that would be approximately 800 square feet to replace the various outdoor areas in their backyard. With the new 800-square-foot patio, the impervious surface coverage would be approximately 76%, so it would be a much smaller increase in the impervious surfaces on the property. Typically, a zoning variance would be needed for staff to be able to approve this type of request.
of request, this building permit. However, since the need for the variance is based on the homeowner's disability and not the property per se, the variation standards could not be fully met, and therefore, in consulting with our village attorney, it was determined that the village board action in the form of a consideration of an ADA accommodation would be the appropriate course of action. So you have a copy of their plot of survey before you, the letter from the guardian. As they stated, that Mr. Zunin has limited mobility due to some injuries that he received, including a traumatic brain injury, and this makes it difficult for, for him to walk around independently and navigate stairs and any sort of like differences in elevation. So with the backyard with its various surfaces of grass and pavers and the deck and the stairs, it makes it difficult for him to walk around in the backyard and therefore prohibits, prohibits his full use and enjoyment of the home. So the guardian states that having a paved yard area would allow for him to safely walk outside, enjoy the benefits of being outdoors, his property, and enjoying the backyard with his family and children. So for the benefit of the homeowner and his family, they're requesting that the accommodation be granted by the village board. It should be noted that the village board need only grant an accommodation to the extent that it is reasonable. The board could therefore set limitations on this accommodation, such as a requirement that the patio be removed in the event that the disabled individual sells the home, or you could require the applicant to provide information from an engineer showing the accommodation will not increase flooding on the adjacent properties. So we're looking for direction from you as to whether or not you're willing to consider the ADA accommodation. And certainly Lance can answer any questions related to the ADA Act specifically.
Well, first of all, I think those two caveats are, are, I would, would want to see those, that the patio be removed upon selling of the home, and that we want to make sure that we're not causing damage to his neighbors, and I'm sure he wants to make sure he's not causing damage to his neighbors. You know, the, the other question I have is, is, I mean, he's, you know, would it be more beneficial for us to send Orion out there and have him make that judgment and then bill the, bill the resident for the cost of that service call? Just because, I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna bear that cost anyway. At least Orion has a history in the area, has a history with Riverside, and has, you know, we've done some storm water things, so he, he will understand more of the property than I think someone coming in out of the blue, and I think it would be revenue neutral or cost neutral to the, to the homeowner.
So typically, if something does require a grading plan and a grading plan to be reviewed, those costs are passed on through the building permit. They're added on to the building permit fee so that the village is made whole for, for the use of our consulting services to review those plans. So that is, is typical if a grading plan is required for the work. So, I mean, we can certainly add that fee on to the building permit fee if you want to have them go out and do that site visit and do a determination as to whether the patio would cause, or what could, should be done in order to ensure that the patio does not cause any drainage issues on the neighboring properties. And typically, we work with Dan Lynch out of their office. He's the one that typically deals with our building permit issues and grading and site drainage, but we can have him or we can have Orion, whoever it is that we want to.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't mean to say Orion just because it has to be Orion. Yeah, our village engineer.
Our village engineer.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That would make me feel more comfortable personally. Anyone else?
Question, were permeable solutions discussed or pursued or?
Yes, I did, you know, mention that obviously impervious surface and drainage is an issue. Their issue is, is they really do need to, to be a flat and level surface, so going the permeable paver route, there's gaps and settling that can happen that they're not comfortable with in that solution. Other permeable solutions that I can think of, again, are things like grass crease or things like that, and that's still not gonna be providing that flat even surface for him to be able to, to utilize. Obviously, you know, a concrete patio is not ideal, but in, in this situation, it, it seems to be what he needs in order to be able to utilize his backyard.
He has issues walking and lifting his feet and shuffling, so that, okay.
And, and then, has there been any correspondence from neighbors for or against, or has there been any notification?
There's been no notification to neighbors regarding this request.
I mean, in a, in a typical variance process, there would be, and I think just, as trustee Ballerin said, to head off potential future conflict, I think it would be wise to at least let the neighbors, make the neighbors aware of the situation.
Would we want to do the same as we would for a variance, or as we would for like a grading plan notification?
I, I don't think it has to be formal, but I think the neighbors need to...
Immediately adjacent neighbors.
Immediately adjacent neighbors, yeah.
I, I think we have an obligation to help this, this resident neighbor out. I also think we have an obligation to make sure what we do doesn't impact the neighbors.
Correct.
Right? So whatever we have to do to make that happen, i.e., it can't flow water over to a neighbor's yard and flood their yard. So we'll have an engineer make sure that we have the grading appropriate, and, and I truly think we need to do the notification thing just so that we're notifying people, so.
So we have a consensus? Do we need, we don't, do we need a vote, or is this just...
No, but it can be direction of this unanimous.
Just to prepare the ordinance, I have one suggestion on the condition limited to removal on the sale of the property. I would suggest the condition read that it be, have to be removed when it is not providing, when it is not enhancing the individual's enjoyment of the property any longer, which may not be when it's sold. Like, for example, the, I mean, I don't mean to be negative, but the individual, if a family is there, it could become an invalid or pass away, and then technically, the family could just keep it till they sell. So, I mean, if that's okay, if that's what the board wants, that's okay, but legally, you can limit it to as long as it's providing the benefit that's required by the federal law.
I would, I would feel comfortable with that myself, that this is, this is individual-centric.
Correct, and that's why it's so, it's so antithetical to the variation process, because there, it doesn't matter at all who or what, who's using it, whether you have a rough dog or you have, you know, it's all based on the property, and so it's totally different.
And then the variance continues on.
Correct, correct. And actually, your, your planning, you know, your planning and zoning commission doesn't even have the authority to consider these kinds of things. So that's why it's before you directly.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Second on our consideration agenda tonight is discussion and update on the wayfaring signage project. Sonia, Director out.
Yes, so we were before you back in July with our wayfinding signage. The EDC had been looking at trying to prioritize the wayfinding sign within our budget amount, and they had made some recommendations. The village board mostly focusing on sort of our exterior arterial roads and directing them into town, as well as trying to capture zoo traffic was how they were trying to prioritize the signs. So they were looking at like gateway signs on Harlem and Burlington and 31st and First, at First and Forest, and at Harlem and Long Common, and then having some directional signs by the south entrance to the zoo, so at there at Ridgewood and Gulf, and then also one at Ridgewood and First Avenue to capture that eastbound traffic from the zoo. And then they were looking for some directional signs at 31st and Displanes and Dela Plain and Burlington, and I think that's, I think that kind of captured all of them. So, oh, also in Evelyn and Long Common, a directional sign. So the board discussed that and asked staff to look into the wording a little bit more, said you guys wanted to see the wording that would go on those directional signs, as well as looking at, after further discussion, because then in August, we got into the budget discussion, was asking us to kind of further refine how we could prioritize this and maybe span it over a few years to do this installation. So we reviewed the various sign locations, and we did determine that one was not feasible. The sign proposed at Displanes and 31st facing west, so as you're at that T-intersection, it would be facing you and then telling you to turn right to come into Riverside. That area is just too tight between the driveways and crosswalks and streetlights and other street signs. There's just simply not enough room to accommodate a sign at that location. Additionally, the sign proposed for Burlington and Dela Plain, initially, it was asked that it would be the east side of Dela Plain. It's not feasible over there, just with the stop sign location and how the parking space is then cut in, there's not enough room there for that sign to not be blocking. I think there's also a fire hydrant there. So between the fire hydrant, the stop sign, there's just not enough room to accommodate it east of Dela Plain. There could be accommodated west of Dela Plain on Burlington, but then we're in a residential district, and it's not in a median or, you know, in a parkway, it's, it's in a residential area. So I'm a little bit less comfortable putting a sign there. If the board is okay with the sign in that location, there is room to accommodate one just west of Dela Plain on Burlington, but that would not be my first choice. Additionally, let's see, the board also wanted us to look at the zoo traffic. So for location of other signs, we did reach out to the zoo, we did look at our traffic plan, and our traffic study did weekday counts in the late fall. So it's all high school traffic, not zoo traffic. So we reached out to the zoo to get an idea of how much use the south gate has. So based on their information, we're looking at about 30% of their annual visitors come through that south entrance. So when we break down to what they see on a good summer weekend day, which is typically 10,000 to 15,000 visitors, if we look at 30% of those coming through the south gate, we're looking at about 3,000 to 4,500 people entering and exiting through that south gate. Unfortunately, we don't know which direction that those people are going when they leave. They're going east or they're going west. Don't have that information. So based on that, we would recommend that we should at least do the sign in that triangle so that if you're leaving the zoo, you see the sign, and then we can also do one at, at First and Forest to have that additional, additional signage to just keep them on the right path. Let's see. Also looking at 31st and First Avenue intersection, there are some issues to be considered, so we'll need to work with IDOT very closely on where a sign might be able to go in that area for doing a gateway sign, just there's some pipeline issues, some brush overgrowth. It is an IDOT road, and some signage in that area. So we would need to work with them to see if there is a feasible location on the west side of First Avenue. If not, we might have to look to the east side of First Avenue. So that would not be a sign that we would recommend having, you know, in our first round of them, just because I think that is gonna be a little bit of give and take with IDOT and trying to find a location that, that will work out there. We provided you with the wording for each of the signs. I provided you with sort of a site plan that kind of showed each intersection and the wording that would be on each of the directional signs. So we're looking at the wording being shopping and dining, water tower and historical museum, metro station if it's applicable. So the one by the zoo might not say metro station because it could be in conflict with the Hollywood Station out there, but the ones that are closer into town would mention the, the metro station. And then some of them would incorporate indication for some of our bike routes. So the one at Long Common and Evelyn, we would recommend including the Palmer Route on there, and then also the flip side of it. So if you're coming into town, it would tell you the different things you could see, but if you were going out of town, so that southwest-facing sign, it would tell you that the Harlem Business District, important, so, or at least kind of capture this into that, letting them know that there is more on Harlem that they can see as well. And, as far as recommendations for phasing, we're looking at prioritizing the zoo locations and gateway entries on major arterials for fiscal year 2019. So that would be three gateway signs. That would be the one at First and Forest, one at Harlem and Burlington, and one at Harlem and Long Common, and two directionals, and that would be the ones by the zoo's south entrance, so Ridgewood and First and Ridgewood and Gulf. That would be about $24,000. Then looking at fiscal year 2020 would be the remaining gateways and directionals. So that would be the two gateways, the one at 31st and First Avenue, and then the one at Millbridge slash Berry Point and Fairbank, where you come over the bridge, and there's currently the Riverside population sign, so to replace that sign, and that had been at the direction of the village board back at the July meeting. And then three directional signs. That would be the one at Displanes and 31st, the one at Long Common and Evelyn, and then one at Kimbark and Forest, which is one that the EDC had recommended to an alternative if one wasn't feasible on Displanes. So that's our recommendation for 2020. We're looking at $24,000 for that, or perhaps better would be $26,400 to account for inflation, because right now, we're kind of working at 2018 numbers, and as we're trying to extrapolate out, could be, you know, so I used a 10% number to kind of give you an idea that maybe that would be a better number to use, and then extrapolating out to 2021. Staff would recommend that then, if we want to do more, we did design parking lot signs that would identify our public parking lots. So we have four public parking lots downtown. We've got the green lot on Burlington, the lot that's next to the Landmark Kitchen, the lot that's next to Riverside Bank, and then we also have the lot that's on Quincy next to Metalmites that's available in the evenings after the bank closes and then on weekends. So that would be another public parking lot that we could put a sign, you know, do the parking lot, public parking sign on. So that would be then my recommendation then for 2021, would be put in those four parking lot signs. So we're looking at 19, about $19,000, but extrapolating that it's several years from now, it could be more expensive, maybe $23,000.
So if my math is correct, these are $8,000 a sign. I think if I remember correctly, didn't you, didn't trustee Jesa talk about the sign at Evelyn and Long Common, about the Kent and Long Common, about the need for that?
Yeah, I mean, I would see a need for many of these signs, but certainly not that one.
So, I didn't get specifically told to take them out, so I left them in, but we certainly don't have to do those, those two if we don't want to. I think the other one was the Burlington one, but as I said, I'm a little concerned about doing one that's right in a residential district and not, you know, in a median that's, you know, in a wider right-of-way area.
The only other one that I was thinking about is the one on Kimbark and Forest, but as looking at this more, I, I see it's facing north, so it's catching the traffic coming up Displanes, up Kimbark, that has to come that way during school hours.
Yes, during school hours, exactly.
That makes a lot of sense.
I think the phasing works well. I just want to make sure that we're not doing one section and then not finishing it. You know, some, some of these signs work in pairs, a lot of them work in pairs. And so, like, the Long Common and Evelyn one, to me, works in pair with the Harlem and Long Common one. Those, you, you kind of need that. If you're directing people who do not know Riverside from Harlem, they're gonna get on Long Common and not know where they are half, you know, half a mile in or whatever. So it doesn't make sense to me to have one of those and not the other. I think we need both, but I just want to make sure that when we're phasing these in, and it's okay that it's across two years, but I, I want to make sure that that's considered, and so that when the budget comes around, that we're not wondering why we, you know, we need all the money to pay for that sign because we're completing what was put in before. That's, that's my two cents on it.
Gotcha.
I guess, my position, and I'll go back to what I said the last minute, I, I don't see much value in these signs. I actually think that the fewer signs in Riverside, the better, for me personally. The only signs that I like to see are safety signs that, that improve the safety of the village. I think most people at this point are using Waze or their navigation system to figure out how to get somewhere, and Waze works very well on Riverside. I think that if people are going to Riverside, it's primarily a destination where they'd be using that, but that's just, again, that's just my, my opinion on that.
Yeah, I, I somewhat agree. I would like to see us get back in, under budget, so I, I would like to see us, I think we identified maybe one or two that could go, but I, I, I think we should all agree to fully fund the program and not put it off to the future and then maybe pull the plug on something, but I think we should probably get it back within the budget we additionally identified. And then I had another question on the, on the bike routes. I thought, my memory was, we decided we were gonna take those off the wayfinding signs, and I don't know how that impacts the pricing, but it's gotta do something if we're taking...
I, I don't think the amount of wording on there is gonna affect the pricing. The pricing is really about the, the sign itself and the post and the details.
Unless we have multiple signs telling you where these bike routes are, having one sign saying Palmer that way, that's not gonna do it.
It doesn't, it's just too busy, and it detracts from the other more meaningful...
I would, I would agree with that, bike route signs are not necessary.
And the purpose for phasing it was solely financial?
Yeah, it was based on the budget discussion.
So wasn't the thought of, we're gonna test run with the most important and then see if the response is good? Because I would also maybe consider, why wouldn't we do it all at once if there's a cost savings for doing that?
And that's something... And that's something, that's why I wanted to put those additional numbers in there.
Deferring the cost doesn't eliminate the cost.
But didn't we say, didn't we say that we were going to try the signs in the entry points where they would be most utilized? And then if that did work out and we saw value in it, we would then go to the phase approach. I don't think it was financial, Mike.
That was part of the discussion, yes, that we wanted to focus.
I think it was more the entry points, and we even talked about the Berry Point and Fairbank where we said we already have a sign there. I think that was actually removed to a later phase as well, wasn't it?
The board asked me, thought it was important that we had consistency so that that sign would be replaced and the new gateway sign be put there so that at our entry points, the signs were all the same and not different. So.
To your point, Mike, the sign costs are forty-eight thousand dollars, but we budgeted fifty-two. Am I reading this correctly?
I count seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got nineteen...
You missed a year.
I missed a year. Oops. I would agree with, I would agree with Mike that we should probably try to keep this in budget. And parking lot signs for downtown public parking, for parking lot signs, green landmark, kitchen lot, Riverside Bank Lot, Melon Ice Lot.
So again, the EDC had recommended focusing more on the wayfinding signage. I put that in as just part of the CMAP plan. We had originally talked about parking lot signs. I told the EDC we didn't have the money for all of that. Let's pick ten signs. So they picked the gateways and the directionals. I put in the parking lot signs. If we're going to phase this over years, maybe in three years, maybe we do have the money to be able to do the parking lot signs after all that we had originally talked about. Currently, we just have the brown signs with the Riverside on there, says Riverside Public Parking on them. So to try to have something that's consistent with the other signage that's happening in town and uses our branding, it's a little bit more clear, nice green pea.
I think we should not give the parking yet the same budget and prioritize the ones that are going to help our EDC folks, so like the one over, the two over there in Ridgeway. Didn't they say the biggest draw that they wanted to get was to try and get folks after the zoo, which may or may not be using Waze, to work that way? So if we had to prioritize it, it'd be those two over on Ridgewood. I'm not so sure why we even have one at Kimbark.
Because I think the people that are coming in off of Woodside, and I think if we do fiscal year 2019 and 2020, we stay in budget. And I, you know, I can be, I can be, I could be swayed on what signs are. I think all of these signs are a good, are a good thing for the village. Again, I, the Evelyn one is something that I question, but I respect what you say because it is a long way in.
That's the breadcrumbs area, right?
Yeah. So that's, yeah. The Kimbark one was the other one I thought, but you know, you know, a good portion of the year, a lot of traffic comes down Kimbark because of the one way on Woodside in front of the school, so.
And I think part of it is not just the, I hear you on the ways, but I think it's also we're making a statement with these signs, right? If you have your ways, you don't know where you're going, you're in a place you don't know, you're looking at your phone, there's something about seeing a sign, the EDC talked a lot about this, about seeing the sign that says, okay, I'm on the right track and this is where I'm going. Oh, and I'm so close that they have signs about the Metro and the blah blah, you know, so I, that comfort level comes through. And we've all experienced it when we've driven into a, another town, we don't know where we are, and we see the signs that pop up in the downtown area. There's this, and it's a welcoming thing, too, not just a comfort level for the people who are coming in, but it's a we want you here type of statement.
Yeah. I like the gateway signs, and I, personally, I would go, I would, I would be okay with maybe reducing the scope of nineteen and twenty a little bit and doing it all in one year, personally. Because I don't know why we deferred at least gateway signs for a year.
But we can do nineteen and twenty within budget. We can do all...
But we can do it in one year as well.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah. We should just do it all in one year and maybe, I don't know if there's consensus that we remove...
I thought there was one we agreed kind of...
Remove the bicycle routes from there?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, is there any, I mean, I don't want to do that enough. I mean, is there bicycle routes, is everybody...
I can take those off.
So what I'm seeing is we're good for fiscal year nineteen and twenty to do in fiscal year nineteen within the budget amount. Actually, we come in under budget.
Wasn't there a directional sign, though, we recommended removing? Or did we change our mind on that?
I did not include the one on Burlington and Della Plain in here, but if you wanted to add that in, then that would have been an additional.
Is that the one that has a question mark next to it?
But that one puts us over budget.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I really want to stay with that.
That's not the idea.
Yeah.
At that point, when you make the turn there on Burlington, you can see the businesses all the way down, and you see the water tower at the end of the street. I mean, you've got, you've got a waypoint, for lack of better words, right? You can see that.
So you head towards the water tower.
Keep going.
And when you're going the other way, just head towards Sears Tower, gets you right to the city.
And we...
Sorry.
You know, this, there is an economic development advantage to here was the Chamber of Commerce. Did we talk to them about potential funding sources since they may benefit from some of this also?
It is my understanding that they might be willing to add some money to it, but I don't know what their caveats would be on doing that. There had been some talk that a logo or something along their lines would need to be placed on the sign, and I don't necessarily know that we want to start intermixing the branding.
We're not selling our signs.
So I can approach them, but if the direction of the board is, is we just want it to be as it is, but if you're willing to pitch in money for a particular sign or in general to help, I can approach them about that, but...
Or potentially if they think the parking is important, then they can fund Phase Three, but right now I don't think we're strongly considering Phase Three at all.
I hope we can consider Phase Three someday. That would be great, but that, I mean, that means that these signs are going to be successful, right? The success of the first two phases will necessitate Phase Three.
Do you have everything you need?
So we're going to combine...
Nineteen and twenty together?
Nineteen and twenty into twenty nineteen.
And get rid of the bike routes.
And I will work with the village manager and finance director on updating the budget to reflect that and those numbers.
Thank you, Sonya. You can go home.
You're dismissed.
You're dismissed. You've been...
Welcome to stand.
Yeah. The last thing on consideration tonight is a discussion regarding the installation of red light cameras. Chief, if you would, please.
Good evening again. So at the August second board meeting, the board directed me to get some more research, and what their research was, was to put out a survey to other communities. So how I approached that is I put out a survey to the West Suburban Chiefs of Police, which is thirty police agencies, DuPage County Police Chiefs Association, which is thirty-five, and I did send it to the Illinois Association of Chief Police, but there was very little response from them because it's not, not many communities in central Illinois or southern Illinois even have this program. So out of that survey, we had really twelve communities or eleven, eleven communities, one community, Harwood Heights, has two vendors. And I asked them for the, it's in your packet, but I asked in my survey, the community, the camera vendor, the fee structure, the years they've had red light camera, current year vendor, so to see if they had changed, and did they do a bid, meaning a request for proposal or request for qualifications? So none of the communities that answered my survey did an RFP or an RFQ. There obviously are more communities that have red light cameras than the ones that answered my survey. You probably know that just from traveling through communities. But this is the return that I got, and I put that email out directly after the August second board meeting with consultation with the manager. The only real difference in what I developed is there's a fee structure for one company and the other one is a straight sixty-forty, with the exception of the Hanover Park, which has Gato USA. When they, according to their deputy chief, when they did their program ten years ago, that company was trying to make inroads in Illinois. That's why they have the sixty-four, thirty-six split. He doesn't believe that's the way it is anymore if you go with their company, but that's, he doesn't know anybody else that's using that one at current, at least their deputy chief did, and no other community answered me that has that red light photo enforcement company. So, and then what I did include in this overall memo, you'll see some questions in here. They're either asked by trustees or I received questions from residents myself, reference to the possibility of the village voting for red light photo enforcement. I included those in your packet, and I want to make clarification to one that is kind of confusing. So SafeSpeed, like RedSpeed and all the companies, follow the Illinois Vehicle Code for the red, no turn on red. So I was told by SafeSpeed that what they recommend to the municipalities, you follow the Illinois Vehicle Code. You have to come to a complete stop. The Illinois Vehicle Code doesn't say what a complete stop is, except that your car has to come to a stop. Now, some communities like to extend that because they don't want to be as harsh. They don't have many communities that do that, but the Illinois Vehicle Code doesn't, you have to have the minimum, you have to come to a complete stop. But if your community wanted to do something else that is, you know, that is more lenient, there's nothing in the Illinois Vehicle Code that says you can't do that. They don't recommend that because when you come to the hearing, the only way to really defend yourself is like we do on the street. When an officer issues the ticket, he's writing the ticket under the Illinois Vehicle Code or he's writing it under the village ordinance. It's really the only fair way to do it. They, they just wanted to let me know that out of all their clients, they do have a few, very few, that do that, so they wanted to be upfront with me about that. But it's our standards, and I, I would recommend to the board if they go with it, our standards in Riverside are the Illinois Vehicle Code. Whatever the Illinois Vehicle Code is, this board standard is our standard. Because that's what we're doing right now on the street. The officers are stopping a car for no headlight, or they write a ticket for no headlight if they're right there and they give a warning. They don't, you know, it's very, it's the only way we can go in front of a judge and say that we follow the same procedure all the time. And we do get that all the time on speeding tickets. Motorists constantly ask to see the radar. It's a routine. The officers let them see the radar. It has to be certified by the state, and the judge will typically ask the officer, bring in the last time you had, so the court sergeant brings into court with him the certification for our radar units. We get them certified every year. So that when defense councils make claims that our radars are off, we could show that we've had, ours are certified by a company called Decatur. We could show that every year Decatur comes and certifies, just like our breathalyzer. So that, that's what I would recommend to the board if they go with the program. That's what every single chief I talked to did. I said, what do you do? They go, we follow the Illinois, whatever the Illinois Vehicle said, said is what we do. So...
Which means come to a complete stop.
Yes. And that's why the officer has to issue the ticket. That's why the state law says SafeSpeed, RedSpeed, any company delivers the batch of videos, the officer has to review them. And there's a document that was on your desk from Westchester, and that's a public document. It's typical, like Westchester had six hundred violations a month. They only categorized four hundred of those violations. Well, SafeSpeed sent them six hundred because there's six hundred violations. Some of those were fire trucks, police cars, funerals, and some of them were just not, did not meet the state requirement. So what does that mean? Well, some of the intersections, Westchester, they had to go back and paint the stop bars, okay, because the law says to come to a complete stop, there has to be a stop bar, has to be there. If that stop bar isn't there or it's faded over the years, you're not supposed to issue the ticket. And if there's special requirements at the intersection, such would be Thirty-First and First, for example, or even by the high school. If it's no turn on red when children are present, or there's no turn on red when there's a, with the new bike path that comes out at Thirty-First and First, you can, the state can put in different requirements that says no turn on red at all, period, versus, you know, coming to a stop and then turning on red. So, you know, and that's prevalent and they said, like, they would do that. It's currently at the high school. If you go to the high school, you'll see no turn on red when children are present. That, that's already there. So you would issue tickets, basically, if there's a no turn on red at one AM in the morning and there's no children there, that's okay if you come to a complete stop. Even if you come to a complete stop on a Tuesday during schools and there's somebody at the other side of the street, somebody's on the west side of First Avenue and the car's on the east side, you can't turn. That's what that's for. So that's how, that's how the violations have to be gone through by either a police officer or a retired police officer, and they're the ones that actually issue the ticket.
And this police officer, retired police officer would be an employee of the village of Riverside?
Correct.
Okay, it's not some person sitting in a...
No.
Cubicle in Downstate Champaign?
Yeah, it has to be a retired certified police officer or you have to have a current police officer on your staff do it. That's the current statute.
Is there any questions for anyone on the board?
I said, I'm sorry. There was some correspondence that I would like to make part of the minutes on, there's not only a traffic safety benefit for red light cameras, but we have, I think, a dozen non-traffic related incidents that were either solved or contributed to the solving of crimes through red light cameras. And I, I would like to, that's a very important piece of this to me.
Yeah, so I reached, at the request of some of the trustees, I looked over the last two years on two different phases. First would be how many crimes have been solved from red light camera use itself or the video? And we've had, in two years, we've had, we've used it six times, all in other communities, and those have been burglary, armed robbery, and theft. And one notable case was the drive-by shooting on Burlington. Not only was that captured on the Riverside Foods owned private camera, at least they caught a vision of the car. It was caught on this, the, actually the Berwin camera that was going northbound on Harlem at Sirmac. That directly led to an arrest in that case. And we've used red light, we had a successful prosecution on a red light camera in River Forest on Harlem Avenue, and we've used it twelve times on other unrelated cases, five of those off of Riverside Brookfield High School's camera on the corner. We've solved two hit and runs in the last two years, and we've used it three separate times just to back up people's stories on serious injury accidents where they have told us the accounts of what took place, and either, either, either one of the people was intoxicated or under the influence of drugs, or the stories were so conflicting that the video provided us evidence as to what actually took place. And those were in accidents that caused injuries. So it has been used in addition to traffic enforcement. We've used other people's red light cameras and we've used other people's private cameras, our own residents, our own businesses, and specifically a high school. That high school corner camera scans the whole area and it catches the street. So I made a joke with the superintendent, I'd like him to update that to HD, so.
Go ahead, trustee Paul.
I just have a question. I think the way you described the state law relative to right turn on red, you have to come to a complete stop, and then you used the term that municipalities can be more lenient, but I would think it'd be stricter. In other words, municipalities could say not only a complete stop, but a one second or two second or three second.
Yes, you're right. That'd be the right term. And you know what they said about that?
From my conversations, I knew that.
It's mostly on state roadways and stuff, but there are a few communities, SafeSpeed said, that's the one I've been dealing with, that the red light cameras, the major roadways go through their town. They actually go through their town, right? And there's a, there's a grade school right on the corner, or there's a high school like Riverside Brookfield High School, and they end up giving a lot of citations to parents because parents are bringing their kids to and from school. So there are some communities that say, you know what, like trustee Paul just said, we'll modify that. I think that's a bad idea because my officers don't, if we're giving tickets at the high school right now for somebody doing a U-turn or parking tickets, you know, we're not, we're not going down the street asking the person if they're a resident, where if the violation takes place in front of the officer, he doesn't have to issue the ticket, he can issue a warning, but the traffic stop is being made based on the violation, not based on anybody's residency.
I have a question. So the three feasible locations for a red light camera are Morton West High School, RB, and the zoo entrance where the bike path is at First and Thirty-First.
Yeah, they're eastbound Thirty-First at First, eastbound Twenty-S sixth at Harlem, and Ridgewood and Forest, First Avenue.
Right.
Once that intersection is completed.
But it's my understanding that, based on our conversations, that as chief of police, you can go for special request and include the RB red light camera in parallel with the Morton West camera and the bike path zoo camera, Thirty-First and First.
So if the board chooses to go with it, we can submit a, so I have to let you know that, you know, we're not the final say, right? And even SafeSpeed or whatever, whatever vendor we went with isn't the final say. IDOT is the final say.
Right.
We have to make petition. So in that petition, I can write a letter as... So in that petition, I can write a letter as chief outlining why they should include First and Forest and Ridgewood in the initial phase. Okay? Why that should be approved. Now, maybe 31st and First and 26th and Harlem go in first, but it's soup, but IDOT could approve Ridgewood and First, based on my letter and consultation with how many, I'd have to get stats, right? How many children are at the school? How many, how many, how many pedestrians go there? Which we already have, from when we did our traffic study and the KLA did the study over by the high school. We have that data. That would be put into my letter requesting that they include that intersection in our overall package. And not delay that until, say that project's not done for two years, well then, we'd have to start the, the permitting process for that intersection would be another year. So you'd be looking at like three years for that intersection.
So just to clarify, what, for everyone, you know, I think that the RB is, but I'm including it as Morton West, because although they're not students that live in Riverside, it's still a school. So I think that the ability to penalize people for not stop, coming to a complete stop before they turn onto Harlem when students are around, whether they're Riverside residents or Berwin residents or Cisro residents, is very important. The other question I have for you is, back to the RFP, so you're saying that none of the police chiefs, all the police chiefs, none of them went for a public bid, they all went with, 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 I mean, they're all pretty much the same price, right? I mean, but, but none of them went public, all, it was 100%?
Out of my survey.
Out of your survey, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
They're all, yeah, I think because the prices are all pretty similar.
Well, they're all, I mean, the prices don't change, so it's not.
Like I said, there's, you know, there's obviously more red light communities.
Of course.
Some communities just didn't want to be included, because they, they understand this is a public, they understand that we're going to be talking about this publicly. I mean, there's some communities that just don't want to share their information, and that's just a fact. But I know they have, they have red lights, because my wife's got a ticket in Willowbrook, I can tell you they had one.
I have four.
So I know they do. I know Crestwood has one on Cisro Avenue. I know, but for some reason, those communities didn't choose to answer my survey.
Well, I will say something. I mean, I've read some things that, that these, that these are just money grabs, they're blah, 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 blah. And, I mean, a lot of, a lot of that may be true. And a lot of communities may do that for various different revenue reasons. But I, I am, I run every day. I mean, and I run down Ogden, or down First Avenue and back up to Loyola. And this year, it's been like eight times that I've almost been hit by somebody turning right onto Har, onto First Avenue, because they're looking up First Avenue, and they don't pay any attention to somebody that's going north on First Avenue. I mean, to the point where, I mean, I, I used to ride a motorcycle, so when I, when I, I don't look at the car, I look at the person's face. So I, I mean, I can tell when they're doing it, so I, I will smack the side of their car. But you know what? I'm smarter than some of the kids. And I think, you know, it's, it's important. And I think, you know what, it's the law. And does it change habit? It sure does. Because, you know what, when I drive through North Riverside, right in front of Chick-fil-A, I make sure I stop.
You know, I think it changes habits too. I'm a true believer in that. I drive home, I know that the Co-County Sheriff's Police sits on LaGrange Road at Archer every day, traffic slows down. It changes the habit in that area, I know it does. So I'm a true believer in that. And our residents tell me that they love it when the police car sits at, on Lionel Road, but as soon as he leaves, you know, cars start acting goofy again. So I do know the why they're there. And I also, I never think a police department should be a revenue source for a village. However, you could go back through your budgets for the last 10 years, and I'm sure the manager could tell you that, you would see a line item of how much we've collected from the court system for our fines. So there's always a fine associated with the ticket, whether it's parking or the officer's road traffic tickets. There's, you know, one year we might have, the court system might have given us, our share might have been 200,000, or 100,000. There's always, there's always fine money associated with the tickets. Lately, it's been going way, way down from what it used to be, because the chunks are being taken. But it's never not, there's never not a fine associated with the traffic enforcement.
The other thing that I've heard is if a particular space or particular spot is troublesome, why don't you just put an officer there? And I mean, my answer to that is, A, we don't have the personnel to do that, just by your, your last suggestion of lying out. I mean, how many, we would love to have an officer sit there every day between 8:00, you know, and 10:00, and 4:00 and 6:00, but we don't have that manpower. So we don't have the manpower to do that. And secondly, if, if somebody gets a ticket through this machine, it is considerably less than if they got a moving violation of sliding through a red light by an officer.
By state statute, right now, it's $100, period.
For?
No matter what company you go with, no matter what business.
Okay, but if you wrote the ticket to a driver going through a red light, it is much more expensive than
Oh, it'll, it'll be probably in the 250 to 300, because the court will assess fees
On top of that.
in addition to the fine. And some fines, sometimes judges don't even think it's too high, they won't even give the fine, right? They'll dismiss the fine and just do the fee, because the fee is mandated by law, the judge can't get rid of the fees. He can get rid of the fine.
So the fees themselves are in the 200s?
Yes.
And those would typically impact your insurance as well, so there's
Yeah, these are non-moving violations, they don't go, they're not reported to the Secretary of State's office. I would, I would like to clear one email I got just before the board meeting, where a resident said, while he wasn't, while he wasn't, he wanted to, me to answer this question at tonight's board meeting, while he was in favor of red light cameras, he wanted to know why I was not pursuing speed enforcement cameras. And I wrote him back and told him that it's under Illinois law, there's only two places in Illinois that can have speed cameras, and that's the city Chicago school zones, and the state police can have them in construction zone on expressways. I'd like speed cameras too. He wrote me that the public would accept speed cameras more than they do red light. And I believe he's probably right, the public would, but Illinois does not, no municipality besides Chicago, and the state police can have those in their community. So that's why, that's why I'm not in front of the board asking for that. He thought, he thought I was asking for the wrong type of camera.
I think if you had stop sign cameras, you would, you'd get quite a few people that, that would be in favor. Any more discussion?
I would like to, go ahead. Well, I have just a couple of things. One is, I appreciate the comments about red light cameras being used for post-incident investigation, but in my mind, it's a separate issue, because we can do surveillance cameras and have that same benefit without using them for traffic enforcement. So just to, you know, to be clear on that, I think there is room for this technology in municipalities, if it's used properly and if it's vetted properly. I think this, this can be an appropriate way to do traffic enforcement. So I'm interested in pursuing this. I think I'd like to know more about the process and how we, how we begin and implement and proceed, before committing to anything.
But the way I understand is, if we have a consensus that we want to go forward, and we got to want to go forward with SafeSpeed, this process is going to take an ordinance and then probably a year?
Well, first they have to do the data collection, right?
They did that.
No, they did it.
So we have to make, the process would be that, yeah, we would have to make, with SafeSpeed, make application to state. But in the meantime, you do have to have an ordinance, and the SafeSpeed attorneys would have to be with our attorneys. They have a standard contract, but they, they're, I talked to their corporate attorney, and they, there is wiggle room. Communities like to have some little tweaks done. So their attorney would have to sit down with our law firm and hammer out a contract.
I have one more clarification. So with regard to the feasibility, the feasibility is there because of the number of crashes that are at those locations, correct?
The number of violations, in addition to the crash.
Crashes.
So the, the video survey showed how many violations were happening
Right.
in that 24-hour period. Then they went to IDOT and said, give us the, IDOT tracks the crash data.
Okay.
So it's a combination of both.
So that's why you can't put one at, I don't know, another location. Displaying's in 26th, right?
Well, yeah, there's like
There's not enough crashes.
There is, Harlem and Ogden didn't have the crash violation.
Right.
You can't
Which is good.
For, like Harlem, a resident asked me why I wasn't looking at Harlem and Burlington and Quincy. Well, Illinois, IDOT says you can't have it within 1,500 feet of a gray cross. So there's a lot of other little, that's why I didn't pursue those, because they would automatically reject that. And that makes sense, because the lights, the traffic lights on our town are tied into the gates up there. So you don't want to have a red light there, a red light enforcement, because when the gates go down, the lights turn red.
Right.
So that would be a disaster.
And they pay for the cameras, correct?
They pay for all, capital, all the costs.
Now, if we said we wanted to do, not do SafeSpeed but do RedSpeed for some reason or other, then we're, we're, that's going to take, that's going to add on, because RedSpeed then would have to come out here and do their own assessment, and then their own dealing. So it's, you know, 12, 12 weeks at the minimum?
Yeah, because IDOT would have to accept, they, they won't have a RedSpeed apply on SafeSpeed's data. Even if they come up with the same thing, they'd have to do their own data.
But there, but there's, but it's only 12, based on your notes, it's only 12 months. Contract, we can cancel up to 12 months and use that data for, to go back out, correct?
But, so we, we can do what we want with the data here, but we, when we submit the application to IDOT, we have to be partnered with a, with a red light camera.
Right, but it's not a multi-year contract, is what I'm saying.
No, I mean, well, it depends. I mean, they, I mean, SafeSpeed has contracts that are two years, they have contracts that are five years. And there's certain outs in them, but those are negotiated between the, our village attorney and the SafeSpeed attorney.
Yeah, and we've, we've reviewed a number of the contracts, so it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. Our concerns are already documented. A number of communities, we've done the review for, River Forest, for example, years ago, and others, both RedSpeed and SafeSpeed. So we've looked at both of their canned contracts and have comments that have a pretty good idea of what flexibility they will, they have.
Yes. That, trustee Valerie, what you said last, just a minute ago, came up at the last meeting, that if we went out to bid or somehow pursued another company, they'd have to do all that background study. Why? I mean, couldn't we write an RFQ that says, please assume these intersections qualify, give us your bid?
So you have to have, IDOT, IDOT would have to review those documents and validate
For us to decide who to go with? IDOT would have to review each of our bids?
No, 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 no. We're submitting the application for the intersections.
Right, I know that.
We would submit the data provided by, that was captured by that particular vendor. So if we're not utilizing SafeSpeed, so we utilize RedSpeed, they have to come out and collect their own data.
After we chose the company, they'd have to do that.
Correct, correct.
So, but to go out to bid, we don't have to do that.
But if, let me, let me, we have the prices here. These are safe, these are RedSpeed's prices. The only one that I think is fudgible is discussed though, because you don't know what that's current. But these are current contracts, so this is what we would expect to pay.
These were all delivered to me since the last board meeting.
With RedSpeed and with SafeSpeed. So we know what, if we'd sent an RFQ out to
Did we ask these companies if they would negotiate, or if they would, in a competitive bid situation, if they would offer a different price?
No, I didn't, I, I
But that's
I thought with SafeSpeed, because that's what our
So Doug, that's sort of my point though, and like, I call it a paid proof of concept. So, so if you go into this, let's just, let's say we defer to what chief Weitzel chose, whether it's RedSpeed or SafeSpeed. And, and if you choose that, you're into it for 12 months, then you have more data at the end of the 12 months, and more leverage when you're negotiating, going into maybe a multi-year contract.
I think a paid proof of concept is the most logical and business savvy way of approaching this.
And I know there's other companies out there too. I know the villages that, that chief Weitzel approached didn't respond, but I just wonder if you approached the companies themselves with an RFP, if they would respond to that. And I guess the last thing I'll say on that subject is, I feel, yeah, as I said before, I think there is a place for this in municipalities, but has a really bad reputation. Really bad reputation. Deserved or not, I don't know. But that tells me that we have to be very careful in how we proceed, we have to be above board. And an RFP is an open, transparent process, where everyone gets to bid, and it's, and we select the one. It doesn't look in any way, this is, you know, optics, but it doesn't look like we're making a deal behind closed doors with one company, because we like them, or because they give good deals to other municipalities. I just think that aspect of it is very important, given the reputation and the perception of this issue in the, in the community.
I can't hardly disagree with all that, but go ahead. Well, I would disagree with that partially, because what I feel that chief just did was a competitive bid.
I know.
And trustee Pollock, what's the criteria for selecting who wins? It's going to end up being expert judgment, in my opinion, of our police chief.
Uh, yeah, that's
Because we may not, I don't think we necessarily want to go with the low bid. That's nice if the low bid is the best technology too, but
Right.
again, looking at these municipalities, I don't think, I don't think these red light camera companies are more attracted to Riverside than they are probably every one of these other intersections. And at a high level, I, to trustee Pollock's point, I do want to acknowledge, and I understand the distasteful history with some of these providers and some of these municipalities. But what I view it as, I trust, and I agree with our chief of police on the traffic safety benefits. I do believe there's a significant free surveillance benefit to this. Free, we're paid for that surveillance.
Right.
And I am more than prepared to make sure that any revenue generated from these lights is reinvested back in public safety. I think, I think we all are talking about that, or I don't think we've said it though. So we're not, we're going to this with our eyes open, we're not idiots, we can read the paper, we've seen what's happened out there. But those three factors, to me, are overwhelming in support of doing this and doing this as soon as possible. And again, I don't know what the criteria of which we would provide an RFP, judge of proposals would be, other than go back to chief and say, what do you think? And we already have done that legwork. So this is one of the few instances I think I would be okay without a competitive bid situation.
So what we need is a consensus in order to, for Lance to draft an ordinance to move forward with SafeSpeed, is that correct?
Can I ask for a motion and a vote?
Sure.
That's what I would prefer.
Can I ask for a motion and a vote, please? Can I ask for a motion in a second?
Sorry, what's the motion?
To, again, you'd make better motions than I do. To direct our attorneys to draft an ordinance for our next meeting, to enter into agreement with SafeSpeed for a period of a year, to install the red light cameras in the village.
And to negotiate.
And to negotiate, yeah. I would, is everybody comfortable with a, with a year? I would, I would like to, is that
They don't require more than a year, so
They may, so like, for example, if you get their, SafeSpeed's contract says, with these other municipalities that actually sent me their contract, if you get out of it within a year, there is
Penalties.
A penalty, like $50,000. If you get out in a year and one day, you don't owe them anything.
So we really, yeah.
I think the norm is two years.
Yeah.
But we have, we can get out at, at a year and a day with, okay. So forget about the year part. So that's what, that's what I'm asking for, and looking for a second.
A second.
Yeah, no, you need to make the first one, I can't make it.
You make the motion.
So who, what he said?
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. And, second by window. Kathy, please come.
Trustee Pollak.
No.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Settiby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
No.
Do we have a need for new business tonight? Any new business?
I, I guess one, do we? Oh.
Jack?
I just, was the passing of Chester Kenzie in order by the board?
I did not know that. If you would, if you would do that from the podium, I'd appreciate that. I don't, I, I know a lot of people know Chad, he was here for a long time.
Good evening all, and thank you for letting me just take a second. As many of, you know, Chester Kenzie has served as village manager for, right off